Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Dr. John Benefile is the pastor of Church of the Rock. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask councilman James Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Mayor Cornet and City Council, thank you for allowing me to pray for you today. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we come to your throne of grace and as we do, we acknowledge you as our Savior and our helper. You said in Leviticus that if we confess our iniquity and the iniquity of our forefathers, that you would remember your covenant. So we do confess our iniquities and the iniquities of our forefathers. Remember your covenant with us. And we seek and pray for the welfare of our city. You said, "For I know the plans that I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans for welfare and not for calamity, to give you a future and a hope." So we pray for your kingdom to come and your will to be done here on earth, in Oklahoma City as it is in heaven. We pray for those in authorities who said to do so. We pray that you would allow us to lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. So, Lord, I bless these leaders in particular. I give thanks for them and I pray that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, would give to every one of us the spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of you, that we may know what is the hope of your calling and what your plan and your purpose for our great city is. Especially, Lord, guide this council on questions about the convention center and the hotel and all the maps questions and give our city abundance of finances. You said that you pray above all aspects and all respects that we would prosper and be in health just as our soul prospers. So thank you for prospering our city and its people. Thank you for healing and restoring those affected by the storms. And I pray the 91st Psalm for all of us. And we say, Lord, that you're our refuge and our fortress. You're our God in whom we trust, for in Oklahoma City we trust in you. No evil will befall us, nor any plague come near our city. You give your angels charge concerning us to guard us in our ways. We call upon you and you answer us. You'll be with us in trouble. You rescue us and honor us. With a long life you satisfy us and let us see your salvation in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Million Hearts Day is forthcoming. Would you all come forward? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it. We'll get settled and we'll meet our local guests.
Whereas Million Hearts was established by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in September 2011 to bring together communities, health systems, nonprofit organizations, federal agencies, and private sector partners to fight heart disease and stroke. Whereas heart disease is the number-one killer in Oklahoma County and more than 75,000 of Oklahomans have or are at risk of developing heart disease, including acute heart attacks, chronic heart disease, hypertension, tension, and stroke. Whereas healthcare providers and patients should partner to develop and implement person-centered approaches to reducing heart disease. Whereas people can take steps to prevent heart disease and stroke, including A) for aspirin daily when appropriate, control of B) blood pressure, C) cholesterol management, and S) smoking cessation, known as the A-B-C-S. Whereas Million Hearts aligns with Oklahoma City's heart initiatives emphasizing projects that allow citizens to be more physically active, such as sidewalks, jogging trails, a downtown park, and senior centers. Whereas the Oklahoma Foundation for Medical Quality and Oklahoma Organization, committed to improving healthcare and improving lives, is a champion for Million Hearts. Now therefore, Mayor Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim June 11, 2013, as Million Hearts Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation and support for our community's support of health-related issues.
I just really want to thank the mayor and the city council for this time. Oklahoma Foundation for Medical Quality is what's known as a quality improvement organization. We're part of the largest federal government healthcare association. We take care of Medicare beneficiaries mostly. And our goal is to improve patients' lives, population lives, and to decrease the cost of healthcare. And this initiative falls right into that. Heart disease being such a problem in Oklahoma, 12,000 deaths a year. This is really a critical thing in these pretty simple, the ABCs, has really made a difference. Since we've been involved in trying to further this effort, mostly by the efforts of Tracy Prather, we've reached where the second in the country now as far as having people enrolled in this, which is amazing, because Oklahoma doesn't have that big a population. So we're really thankful that Oklahoma City is now on board with us too. So thank you very much.
All right, and the ABCs. An aspirin a day if that's what your doctor has asked you to do. Keep your blood level, your blood sugars and all those things under control. And cholesterol levels, get those checked. And if you need medication, be sure and take it. And then smoking cessation. All right, ABCs. Everybody can remember that and improve the health of this community. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you very much. Let's see, our friends from HUD are here. Jerry Hayden, Donna Wicks, anybody else? Just the two of you?
Nice to see you again. Thank you for all your outstanding work in our city. I know we've worked together on a lot of projects. Thank you very much.
This morning, we're here to present an award that HUD authorizes me to give once a year. It's the Field Office Director's Award for Excellence in Housing Programs. Last year was the first year we started. It went to the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. And this year, it's going to go to the city of Oklahoma City. And I'm going to let Donna tell you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here today. And we wanted to thank all of our elected officials and you, the mayor of our great city, to participate as stakeholders on our Edge of Brick Town project. This is a great project that you have chosen to support us on. And mostly, it's one of your roles that has been to help us to leverage funds from all of our stakeholders. One of those is to bring funds to this project from the state, which is our NSP III funds, where we purchased the property. And today, we're asking to leverage additional funds from NSP I so that we can put that towards our infrastructure, as you know, which is a huge cost in any construction project. In addition, as a stakeholder, you've brought us staff from the city, such as Matt Gabrielson and Russell Klaus, to really manage and create the vision for this project. And we just wanted to thank you for all the work and effort as stakeholders, that you are not forgotten and even at times you challenge us on this project, but that is your job, but that we want you to know that this is a great project and it is setting the standard for affordable housing. It'll bring sustainability, economic development, and a new quality of life for everyone within our city. And so we appreciate your help and your support. And in 2015, when we meet again, we will be onsite when we can do a ground opening at the end of our journey. We thank you very much.
That is great. Thank you on behalf of the council and the employees of the city of Oklahoma City. If you want, hand that to the council. Let them plan around and share in this award. You know, a few things are more challenging or at the same time more rewarding than to see an area unpopulate and then repopulate, because it's so hard to turn an area that people have deserted through decades of neglect or for whatever reason, to see new housing go into those areas. But it is one of the most fulfilling things you can see as an elected official in a city, especially one that's trying to create density the way we are. And so we appreciate the federal help and working with your office. I know we've done, it seems like an extraordinary long string of projects as we try to work on our urban issues. So thank you for your help. And we very much appreciate the award. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation to our friends from HUD. Thank you. It says, "The United States of America Department of Housing and Urban Development, in recognition of the outstanding work performed in the area of affordable housing to the city of Oklahoma City, honored for our outstanding commitment to increasing quality, affordable rental housing in Oklahoma City. Says our efforts have played a critical role in defining a new standard for affordable and sustainable rental housing across the state of Oklahoma. And our dedication and commitment to rise to the occasion is highly commendable." And it's signed by Jerry Hayden, who's the Oklahoma City Field Office Director. Very nice. These projects don't happen quickly. And so, and I was driving through the JFK neighborhood not too long ago. I was thinking, you know, just how long that project has been, you know, part of our priority list. But, boy, the fruits of that project are, I think, something the rest of the country should really take notice of. It's been incredible to watch that area turn around. All right, we're moving through the council agenda. And we're now on items 3B through 3E. These are appointments. I'll take a motion for all of them. All right, comments or questions on the appointments? Cast your votes. Cast unanimously. Onto item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for both May 28 and June 4. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 14. Okay, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning. On page 24, under Items from Individual Consideration, item 8D, PUD 1482, the applicant requested this application be withdrawn, so that item will be stricken. That's item 8D. And I believe there were some people that signed up to speak on that item. I want to let you know this morning that item 8D has been withdrawn, will be stricken from the agenda. Item 8D, PUD 1492. Moving to page 25, under item 8I1, item D, 5808 South Chertel, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then onto item 8J1A, 4225 North Bar, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item B, 721 West Brit, we ask that that be stricken. There is now a new owner. Moving to page 26, item C, 1136 North Ellison, we ask that that be stricken. It is now occupied. Item D, 128 Southwest Grand, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 4525 Kenyon Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 2805 South Ollie, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 3100 Parker, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item R, 6124 North Warren, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 3021 Northwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Item double C, 4036 Northwest 16th, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Double I, 2350 Northwest 20th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Double L, 1920 Northeast 24th, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Double Q, 1912 Northwest 40th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, double X, 628 Northwest 114th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll adjourn the OC-MFA convenance, the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Make it four items with the claims and payroll. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convenance, the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? Yeah, Pat? B?
This relates to a memorandum of understanding in the softball Hall of Fame.
All sports in the city. Yes, sir.
Can we get see a copy of that MOU?
It's not attached?
Not attached. If it wasn't attached to mine, it may have been attached to others. If there are others, I would...
Okay, we'll get a copy to you. Basically, as we're going forward, we want to make sure we understand whose inventory is whose.
I think that's important for the council.
As we're going, so as we sell naming rights and as we sell field naming rights and different things, what available is out there, we want to make sure we have a clear understanding between the city and all softball Hall of Fame, who has the lease, and all sports, who brings in the largest event to the facility.
I just was concerned that they might have something in there that, you know, would be troublesome to the council and actually we had a chance to look at it.
Okay. Ready to vote the PPA?
Mayor, on item C, there are people here to protest or at least have a conversation about the...
The business improvement district?
The business improvement district. And I'm not sure this is 100% related to the...
Yeah, you're right. We have several companion items to this. Jim, if we're going to hear from citizens, should we hear from them now on the PPA aspect of it?
There are separate items, but we can. I mean, they are related.
Right.
Could we pass this one, though, without hearing their comments?
You know, if we're going to hear it, we might as well hear it now.
I think we ought to hear all of it.
All right. Are there people that have signed up? I have cards here from two people. Jim Hunter?
Yes.
Yes. Would you like to speak to the council, Jim?
Yes, please.
And Jim, we will need your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name's Jim Hunter. I own Hunter Battery at 514 Southwest 25th Street. My home residence is 12401 Tracy Drive, Oklahoma City. I'm before you today to visit about the business improvement district in Capitol Hill. We're asking for you to postpone the decision for the approval of the tax district for the region. We have issues with the management, primarily that they're taxing people outside Capitol Hill and then asking us to support their trash collection and groundskeeping and the management to improve the district. And we feel like that's unfair. So we want to have time to visit with their management, to maybe come to a resolution to either expand the service area and/or remove us from the role for that area.
Okay. The geographic boundaries are probably set by us. Wouldn't that be right?
Yes.
Is your concern that you're not getting the type of service inside that area or you just don't like the boundaries in general?
Well, I am in College Hill, but they've expanded the boundaries to my business out on the west side. And they're not doing anything for us. I mean, the trash collection starts at Walker and goes east to Shields, but there's not even a trash can or anything. We never seen anybody down at our spot.
Where's your ROI? You're not...
There's no ROI.
You're paying into it. You don't feel like you're getting anything out of it.
There may be some intangible in that there's general improvement, that we're trying to attract people into the area. But, you know, I mean, there hasn't been any improvement. They've been going on for a few years now and it's more of the same.
Okay, let us hear from a couple other people and then maybe we can get someone to explain the service level that you should be able to expect. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Alfonso?
Yes. My name is Alfonso Macias. I have a business in 509 Southwest 25th. I'm a neighbor, Mr. Jim Hunter, also in the west side of the Walker, in the Capitol Hill area. And I agree with everything he said regarding this particular task assessment that was imposed on us, but never receive any benefit out of that. That's very improper. But so we would like respectfully to request a decision on this particular assessment and to give us more time to talk more and visit the area so we can explain the details.
Okay. Do we have representatives of the bid that are here that can talk to the service level that the property owners can expect? Yeah, come on forward.
Good morning. My name is Jorge Hernandez. I'm the executive director for Capitol Main Street at this moment.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, yes, I know we've been speaking to some of our city leaders, Kim, and other representatives. And as we looked at the map in the area, this was drawn before I came onboard as executive director. I know that we've addressed or tried to address some of the issues in the past, especially in these properties that are right in the outside edge of our bid district area. They don't have a sidewalk. They don't have trash cans in front of them. I don't know how it was decided at the very beginning to include those properties. But I know that we have reached out to them and tried to figure out what can we do to bring value to their assessment that they're having to.
Have the lines changed?
Not since I've been on there. No, not since the very beginning. No, sir.
Okay.
It's been like this since the very beginning.
Okay, and when was the beginning?
This is, we're going into a fourth year of the bid.
Okay. Meg, did you want to check in on this item?
Just, Kim, do you have some background on the drawing of the boundaries? I don't recall.
Hi, good morning, Mayor and Council. The bid boundaries were drawn based on a streetscape edge. And it's my understanding that the streetscape ended before these properties. And there's very little improvements in front of these properties. Sorry, I have allergies going in my throat this morning. Since I've been working with the public over there, there's been complaints from a couple of the property owners about the fact that they're on the very edge of it, they're not in the heart of the district. And the lines, the way that they're drawn, it was set up as a 10-year district. And as I understand, and Ben, help me out if this is, needs some checking, is that in order to change those lines or change their service rates, we need to go back through a petition process, which would reset it. And I'm imagining that would probably be somewhere between six and nine months.
It just seems to me like there'd be some level of service that they not only should expect, but could be delivered. I mean, even if they weren't part of the streetscape project...
Absolutely.
There are other, you know, elements of service that they don't feel like they're getting today, apparently. Certainly don't feel like they're getting their money's worth, or they wouldn't be down here today protesting.
That's how I understand it. I met with a couple of the property owners yesterday, and I met with Jorge and his staff yesterday, and suggested that we continue conversations. And I'm happy to facilitate that, to look at what kinds of value, what sorts of things the bid does allow, so that they can maybe, if it's not frontage maintenance, there's marketing and other sorts of services that they could offer. And I expect that we're going to have those conversations, you know, coming up after this meeting. There wasn't enough time. I found out about this on Friday, so...
Okay. Any other questions here? We can bring back the property owners again. Pete, you want to say anything?
Well, I would much prefer to have those meetings before we approve this than afterward. Because I think if we wait for the approval, that puts some pressure on people to make a decision to do something. If we don't, then the pressure's off for another year or however long it is. And I understand that there's some complications in continuing even for two weeks because of the situation expires on the 14th, if I understand it, which I did not. See, and I'm a little bit troubled by the fact that that's not here, that wasn't here before today. Because when I get myself in a situation where there's nothing I can do but do harm to one side or the other, that's a position as a councilman I don't like to be put in. It should have been here a week ago or two weeks ago. So if there's something arose, I would have an opportunity to umpire or do whatever councilmen do in disputes like this. But this puts me in a situation where I'm going to do harm to the bid if we don't approve it today, but I'm going to do harm to these people that sound like they have a legitimate concern if we continue it.
Yeah.
I think I would err on the side of continuing for two weeks. And I can't do it two weeks, a week.
One week.
One week. One week. I would err on the side of trying to be, make sure everybody's voice is heard. I think the bid is doing a good job on the part of it, on the part between Walker and however far we...
Oh, yeah.
I think it's doing a good job.
Yeah, me too.
I think it's cleaner, it's better, it's safer. Yeah, I see all kinds of good commercial activity. I'm there at least once a week to eat a hamburger. But it's a good, I think it's positive. But I would like to be in a situation where I can say that it's also completely fair. And I'm not sure, I don't blame anybody sitting here for that.
Yeah, are the assessed values incremental based on where you live or is it the same for all property owners?
No, it's based on where you live and based on what you're facing, what street you're facing.
Okay, so they are paying a perhaps reduced amount from those who might be on Commerce or might be on Southeast...
Correct.
Southwest 25th?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I would say to the property owners who might be in the room or might not, I would expect you're receiving some incremental value through the city's investments and, well, shouldn't say the city's investments, really it's the property owners' investments. And, you know, there's a democratic process that takes place here. Doesn't necessarily ease your pain if you don't think you're getting the benefit here, but it's not something necessarily that we've applied upon you as much as it is the other property owners wanting to do better and wanting to invest in the neighborhood as a whole. And we've seen a lot of really great projects come out of the bid improvement district process. What are the repercussions if we defer this a week?
I don't think a week's a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it would have to be two weeks. But if it's only one week, I'm going to move a week's continuance on all of it.
I don't have a problem with that. The city manager's saying that it doesn't seem like that's going to create a problem. And we just asked you to work with these property owners. And if you could, you know, spell out on paper what level of service they're going to be receiving. And it may not satisfy them, but at least if that's dispersed to the rest of the council, we can kind of see, you know, what the cost benefit is to these property owners. Because I think we're all proud of how far Capitol Hill's come, you know, in the last 10 years. And since those street improvements have been made, it's turned that area around. And as Pete said, you know, I think a lot of us are now spending our money in Capitol Hill and we weren't spending it necessarily there before.
Sure.
So it seems like this can, if not be fixed in a week, it'll be better in a week and there's going to be a better understanding.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right, thanks very much. Pete, you want to make a request for a deferral?
I would also offer my time. If you want to have small meetings or a larger meeting, whatever, I'd be willing to come and listen to everybody and try to facilitate some kind of an agreement. Because I think that it is a good project. And I would think it'd be a mistake to debate the merits of the whole project when I think almost everybody believes it's worthwhile. It's worthwhile, so...
Pete, I would really like to just echo your comments that I think there is really, it's hard to define with a hard border where the value begins and ends.
Right.
And I appreciated your comments, you know, with that regard as well. I mean, I think it's a tough call. And we're making significant progresses being made, I think, with the rebranding of the area. I think we're going to really begin to start to see some of that momentum take place. So it would be my hope that we could have a conversation in this next week and kind of work out some solutions and continue through the process.
I'd like somebody also to deliver a map of the area so I could see how far east, how far west it goes. If it just goes a couple... Okay. Don't... Municipal Council's office has delivered me a map. It's, which was attached to the back. You didn't have to remind me of that. I could have given you all the credit for it and we'd gone on down the road.
Okay.
But it's a later agenda item.
There you go. There you go. Bail me out. But I really would be certainly most happy, most interested in participating, because I think it's a good program. And I think rather than debating some little flaw in it, I'd like to be working on making it better. So if I can be part of a meeting that would, where everybody would have a chance to air those concerns and we try to work out some solution, I'd be happy to do so. And in that regard, I would move to continue the, all items on all these...
We'll probably have to do them individually.
Individually?
Yeah, but we'll start with the one.
I'll move this one.
All right, so we're pulling item C from the PPA. And the motion on the floor is to defer it for one week. Second? All right, cast your votes on that deferral. And that deferral passed unanimously. And do we have a motion on the rest of the PPA? Okay, how about a motion on the rest of the PPA? All right, cast your votes there and that passed unanimously. Thank you all for coming down. All right, we'll adjourn the OC-PPA convenance, the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Comments or questions here on the EAT? All right, did we get a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-EAT and recommence the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a couple minor questions. On N... A-L... A-N... A-P...
And A Q.
What was the last one?
A Q.
Okay.
And A P and A Q are very similar projects, maybe one answer would be for both of them.
All right. Yeah, Ed?
A E and A F.
A E and A F.
Mr. Mayor. A L. B C. And also A F.
A F. All right. All right, Pat, you want to get us started with item N?
Thank you, your honor. This is just a question of semantics I don't understand. On these, this is a pricing agreement, and we've awarded the bids to several contractors, which we typically do. And the Lisi Brothers Company, it says all items as bid, picked up only. What does picked up only mean? Do we have to go down and get the pieces actually?
If it says pick up only, then the department's actually going to pick it up instead of having it delivered.
It's picked up only. Okay, thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Uh huh. Item A L, Pat?
A L is, has to do with the Phase Two of the sidewalks. And what is the status of that project right now?
Well, Phase One, we're awarding the contract today. Phase Two, this is the engineering contract to begin design on it. As per the plan that was adopted by the city.
How long will that take to be a, to the point where we can actually build a construction contract and know where these sidewalks are going to be, based on sidewalks?
What was the question, councilman?
When? Is this going to be a, a construction project? When will we actually start construction on it? Or letting the engineering?
Well, the, the item A L is, is for, that's actually yours. That's actually Mr. Wingers.
That was a nice call, David. I liked it.
So what's on the agenda today for A L is a consultant report for actually some, several city projects. And there's three. We have a Safe Routes to Schools program that was a grant that we need engineering done on that's going to address some additional sidewalks at some of the Oklahoma City public schools. There's a second one that is some TIF sidewalks in the downtown area that were recently approved. There's some just north of downtown in the area of Walker and Ninth, but then there's other locations. Then there's actually the third component, which is going to be the $4 million identified by the city council for the general fund. As soon as we identify those specific locations, this engineering contract will include the design and construction of those as well. So they're all, there are going to be three different lettings. We would like to get into construction immediately on those first two, the Safe Routes to Schools and those TIF sidewalks. Those are ready to go. We just need the engineering done. On the general fund, just as soon as we can secure the locations, we can do those as well.
And approximately when would that be, when the actual construction started?
On the first two, we'd like to see that begin as early as this fall, in the next, say, 60 to 90 days.
Thank you.
Okay. A N, Pat?
Well, yeah, and this is a, a bridge project. And they're talking about a 10-year storm event. I thought we designed our drainage facilities for 100 years. Is there a mismatch here, or am I just reading this wrong?
So we do have different frequency events of storm that we designed for. These two bridges happen to be in a rural area. And so we do use the 10-year frequency for more of our rural bridges. And it really comes down to cost. What we find is that these roads that are lesser traveled, just with low traffic counts or lower traffic counts than our typical arterials, we do design for a, a lower frequency storm.
But in rural areas, don't we have a problem with the alternate routes that we don't have in urban areas? Though the loss of a bridge in a rural area could be much more devastating than the loss of a bridge in an urban area.
It can in some cases, yes. It, it really is a, is a matter of economics and.
How much more would it cost to design this for 100-year flood?
I can, I can find that out.
Probably just, you know, it should be twice as much, three times as much?
More than that. I mean, again, what we're talking about is, is actually elevating the entire roadway structure to meet the bridge, to, to remove it from, say, the 100-year flood elevation. So it's significant. It's more than twice. I would hate to render a guess, but, but significant cost increases.
Okay, thank you. And item A P and A Q are similar items. They're having to do with easements we're going to acquire. Have we notified the property owners out there that we're going to have to easements yet? Do we have any feel that any of these are going to go to eminent domain process?
That's what item P will actually initiate that process, is for us to begin that notification. And on Q is also the same.
When you start the actual negotiation out there, it would be helpful if we notified the council member who's responsible for that, so that they can be answered some of the telephone calls they're likely to get.
Would be happy to do so.
Thank you, your honor.
Did you get all yours in, Pat? Okay, Ed, A E and A F.
I'm, just a question about the Shine Program. Is this, this contract for 100,000 is comprehensive? Or they're, this is for graffiti removal and overgrowth, brush, trash and debris? Are, are there things outside that are not covered by this, or is this a comprehensive contract?
We have a 100,000 dollar annual contract with the county to provide those services in Oklahoma County. We believe this is all in.
This is all in?
Yeah.
Okay, so things like the red cedar removal and?
They're doing, they're doing that without any additional charge. It, it's, it's not all that clear, and I'll give you an example of that. With the storm cleanup that we're doing from May 31st, the Shine Program is actually doing some, some of the pickup for us. We're doing some contractors are doing some pickup, and that program is doing some pickup. Now, we are paying the landfill costs associated with that pickup. But if we were, if they weren't doing it, we would be having to pay the landfill costs anyway. So it's not really a net increase in cost to us, but that's a little bit of a hybrid. Where they're doing the pickup, but then we are paying the landfill charges associated with that pickup.
And do you feel like?
Typically, when he, on their projects, they, they pick up, they're all in. They pick up the costs associated.
Do you, you feel like we get good value for that 100,000?
They really do. I, I mean, it, it's, it's an interesting program. I think many of the council are familiar with it, but, but we get a lot of volunteer hours that are, volunteer may not be the right word, forced volunteer hours.
Alternative sentencing.
Yes, alternative sentencing hours that are, that are put into that, that is, is used for the city's benefit.
Okay.
There are volunteer, no, there are, there are both. You're, you're correct. There are, there are folks that are, are trying to do good, good volunteer customer, uh, community service also.
Okay, all right.
Especially young people.
Is that both of your items, Ed?
Well, A F, I just, just a comment about this, this particular project. Because this Bricktown Apartments LLC, I think, is the principal reason that we got the award this morning from HUD. And in, in particular, the affordable housing component. You know, there's a, a lot of celebration across the country. There's this movement, this new urbanist movement, where we, where everybody's now starting to speak the same language about placemaking and walkable destinations. And I spent a week before last at the Congress for New Urbanism's meeting in Salt Lake City. And clearly, this is a movement that's going across the country. But there also seems to be this Achilles' heel, which is that as cities are spending large amounts of taxpayer dollars to subsidize this placemaking in their downtowns and rebuild down, their downtowns and, and bring people back in terms of housing and density, there is, the Achilles' heel is gentrification. That you're making these, these highly walkable, nice senses of place that only a select portion of the populace can afford to live. And so you're, you're pushing out large segments of the population, and you're using large amounts of taxpayer dollars to do it. So I think the, the, an important part of the award this morning is an acknowledgement that we, that we recognize that and that we're trying to address it. And that this, this particular project, Bricktown Apartments LLC, is, is one mechanism in trying to address that component. Thanks.
And John, item A L?
Just one quick question. How can small businesses bid to be a part of the sidewalk program? Because, you know, we receive a lot of complaints from small contractors that they are not able to bid on projects. So how may, may a small business?
Certainly, we encourage small businesses to, to, to bid on our, our projects. Our basic requirements are governed by, by some state ordinances, but primarily by the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act. And so there are certain requirements that have to be done. They have to have, be pre-qualified. They have to have insurance. They have to be able to get bonded for that amount. But, but we certainly have a number of small businesses that, that bid regularly on our work.
All right, thank you.
And I think the only thing that I'd add is if they have a contractor that maybe has contacted you, if they'll contact the Public Works Department at 297-2581, we'll be happy to get them in touch with our pre-qualification manager to start walking them through that process.
All right, thank you.
John, item B C?
B C, who are the developers for these projects? As well as how many other requests are going to be needed to complete these projects?
Well, this is it for the projects. The Level Developers is Gary Brooks's firm. Is there a name for Gary Brooks's firm?
Yes, sir. The, the Level West, the developer is Richard McCowen, and he's here today.
Oh, that's the Little West.
And the Fourth Street Apartments, Phase Two, and the developer is Ron Bradshaw, and he's also here today.
Thank you.
And item A F, John?
All right, A F, how many NSP assisted units will be in this particular complex?
Matt Gilberson, Planning Department. The unit count is a proportional share of the end cost of the projects. So it's kind of fluctuating. At this point right now, I think we're in the realm of 40 of 249. If costs go up, unit count goes down because of the proportional share of NSP funds in the deal.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the consent docket. Is there any other comment or question that has anything listed under the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Onto the concurrence docket. All right, we have a motion in a second on the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions from council? Or anyone else? All right, let's vote it. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Puts us on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Six at 1321 Northwest First Street and also 216 North McKinley Avenue. It's currently R3 medium-density residential, and it would become a moderate industrial district and amended to an I1 light industrial district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Caleb Baker. I'm not the applicant, but I'm speaking on his behalf. My address is PO Box 892837, Oklahoma City, 73189.
Great. I just wanted to double check. This, we requested an easement.
Did you receive it?
To be delivered, and that's, Bob, did we receive the easement? We did. Okay, great. Well, then, I knew that you'd been advised of that, and I wanted to make sure it was delivered. There were no protests on this project, and I would move approval.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Five. The address is 605 Southwest 119th Street. It's currently AA Agricultural and R1 Single Family Residential, and it would become a new pud, uh, new pud. David?
Thank you, your honor. This item had no protests. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? I know Mr. Johnson, representing the developers here, but is there anyone speaking against this development? I would move approval of this item, your honor.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 9211 North Broadway Extension. It's a pud, and it would become a new planned unit development. John?
I believe, do we have any protesters?
No one has signed up to speak.
I believe this is going to definitely be good for this particular neighborhood. Is the applicant here?
Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the.
Good morning, Berry Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, 400 North Walker, representing LifeChurch.TV.
Briefly, can you give us a summary of this particular project?
The, this is actually a rezoning from a previous PUD that was done approximately seven years ago. That, it was a PUD that allowed commercial office-type use in it, but specifically excluded the low-impact neighborhood-type development, which would include the church. Life Church has, has purchasing property, wanted to rezone it so that they could put the church in there. This particular project is, it's set up with three different tracks. The Track One, which is kind of toward the north end, that is just south of the McDonald's, will be an office, commercial office-type development. The church will, would be constructed on Track Two, which is going to be the center portion of it. And then the South Track Three would also be another office, small commercial-type section of that. There is a fairly large pond on the south end of that, which would remain in place. We've set it up with the conceptual site plan on the church so that we're essentially, we, we pushed it as far back toward the west as we, as we thought we could. We've done a lot of, of green space in there. It'd be heavily landscaped. And there will be a site-proof screening between the residential and the church property, as well as the commercial office properties when those are developed.
All right, thank you. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 1324 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently R1 Single Family, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Meg?
Is the applicant here today? This is an item that was deferred from last week where the applicant wasn't here. And Bob, have you been in contact with him?
We've tried multiple times to contact the applicants. It's a husband and wife. We haven't been able to get a hold of either party. We might defer this again, and we'll see if we can send somebody out to the.
Do you want to defer it for just a week, or should we?
We can do it a week. We just haven't been able to get a hold of them. They haven't returned our calls.
All right, well, we've got some TIs and, and an easement that we need to get a hold of. So I'd make a motion that we defer this for a week.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to defer item 8A4 one week. Cast your votes. That item is deferred. Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward One at 13100 Colony Point Boulevard. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. James?
Yeah, to my knowledge, the change of this is just to permit retail at, at the development. And as far as I can tell, there's no protesters. Is there anybody here that wants to talk about it?
Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? Okay, it doesn't sound like there's anyone opposed to it. Anyone opposed to this item? Okay, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 12309 South May Avenue. It's currently O2 General Office and an AE2 Airport in Viren Zone 2 District, and it would become a new spud. David?
Thank you, your honor. This is being recommended by the Planning Commission, and there are no, there has been no protests. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against this item? Seeing none, I, I recommend approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A6. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B and C come to us from Ward Five. And first one is to close a portion of Southwest 87th Street. David, you okay with this?
Yes, sir, I am, your honor.
All right, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I'd recommend approval of this item.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 8B? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8C is at 339 West I-240 Service Road. David?
Yes, sir, thank you. We have an application to operate an automobile dealership. And again, it's being recommended by the Planning Commission. There are no protests. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this item? Seeing, yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, if there's anybody.
No, I don't think so. Go ahead.
How does this fit with Invision 240?
Well, assuming we can get approval to change I-240 to Automobile Alley from Councilwoman Salier, I think, I'm kidding about that. It's, it is what it is, Pete. I mean, we do have a lot of dealerships along I-240. But I don't think it's anything that the city should do to try to prevent the expansion. I mean, it does create commerce or business. With respect to that, granted, not the type of the business that the city directly benefits from as far as sales tax. But I think once we see some of the benefits from Invision 240 beginning to take hold, and we're even going to have a walkability study performed in a couple of weeks. So I think we are making progress with that, and I anticipate. we will see a resurgence of traditional retail activity along I-240. But until then, again, it continues to meet the demands for dealerships. So I would recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8C. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a zoning case from before this item was deferred on May 14th. Sorry, what?
We struck that.
All right. Item 8D has been struck. Yes, David?
I'm not sure if we specified the need for an emergency on this.
On 8C?
8C and 8B, I apologize.
Okay. Would you like to request the emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
On item 8B, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the emergency on item 8B. Cast your votes. Passes 9-0. And item 8C?
The same. I recommend approval for the emergency.
All right, and a second? Cast your votes and the emergency passes there as well.
Thank you.
And again, 8D has been struck. So now we're on to item 8E. This is a companion item to the items we discussed about 30 minutes ago. And so I think a one-week deferral is probably in order. Pete, you want to make that deferral request on item 8E? Okay, now we have this listed as a public hearing. Should we go ahead and have the public hearing if anyone is here? Is a process? Okay, so they'll both be deferred. All right, so did we get a second on the deferral for item 8E? All right, cast your votes. Item 8E is deferred a week. And then item 8F is also a companion item to the Capitol Hill bid. So Pete, you want to make a deferral request on item 8F? And do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. And item 8F is deferred one week. Item 8G is a public hearing. This is an item that Bob introduced us to a couple of weeks ago. But it is a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 8G? Okay, it's been introduced to council and it'll be back for a final vote at some point in the future. How about a motion to move this through? Cast your votes and that item moves forward. And then item 8G2 is a similar thing. Bob introduced us to it two weeks ago. And I'll need a motion to move that one along. All right, cast your votes and that item moves forward too. Item 8H is a traffic issue in Ward six. The Traffic Commission has sent this to us and I think it has to do with the new grade school.
I actually think this has to do with the Greyhound, or the bus station. I think it's right on Sheridan.
Oh, okay.
Right by the bus station. And I would move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8I? All right. Somebody has signed up to speak. And Mildred Jones? Mildred, I may have misread your last name. You want to state it correctly for me?
Yeah, Mildred Jones.
Okay, well, I was closer than I thought. And this is item N that you're hoping to speak on. It's in Ward seven. Mildred, I will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, right.
Your address is?
10, 10.
Is it 1030 Northeast 29? Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's my house. That's the one I'm going to work on, but I live at 1111 Northeast 29.
Okay, so you own this property?
Yeah, I own both. And I wanted to know, could I get a little more time on the work I, the
All right.
Action is getting ready to start helping me, the community action. They supposed to get started helping me and I wanted to know, could I get a little more time on that?
Okay, well, councilman can help you there and we also can get some information from staff. John, how do you want to proceed?
I would definitely feel we should honor her request and definitely give her more time. How much more time do you need?
I don't know, the act, the community action going to help me, so I don't really know how much, you know, but just maybe.
If you leave it on, we work with community action. We can extend the timeout. We'll get their plan in place and we can work with them.
Okay. A month? Yeah, just to allow the conversation to continue and then as long as you're working with staff and we feel like it's moving forward, you won't, you won't have any trouble for me.
Okay.
And thank you for coming.
Is that okay? Is that, what day would that be, Francis? Four, four weeks? Well, I don't think, I think we're saying extended.
It's up to y'all. I mean, we can leave it on and we'll work with them or we can defer it and
Let, my recommendation is to defer it and then we continue working on it.
Okay, why don't we defer it for four weeks? Okay, how about a motion then, James, I mean, John, to defer it for four weeks?
I move to defer.
Okay. Cast your votes. That item is deferred for four weeks. Mildred, if you'll just work with staff on getting that property back in a good condition. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, I guess we're ready to vote the rest of the docket on the dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8I? Do we have a motion on that? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8K is a public hearing and this is our annual resolution on the fire safety tax. Doug Dowler is here and either can speak or will speak to this item.
Right, as you said, Mayor.
This has to do with the, this has to do with the public safety sales tax.
That's right. This is the 3/4% permanent sales tax for police and fire. Each year, we list out the purposes that the spending is going to be directed toward to make sure that they're in conformance with the ballot language as it was adopted by the citizens. And then each year, we do, the Auditor's Office works with us to make sure that we really did spend it in the ways that we said here. So this lays out the purposes for that spending. Every dollar is accounted for in the fire and police sales tax. We work with both fire, police, and the municipal councilor's office to make sure everything is in conformance.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Did anyone here show up hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion then on item 8K? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then item 8L is the duplicate item for the police aspect of the public safety sales tax. Again, this is a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 8L? All right, Doug, anything new to add or just pretty much the same, same story, different department? How about a motion? All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 8M is a public hearing regarding a budget amendment and this has to do with sidewalks and the memorial and also the Will Rogers Tennis Center.
Right, so, sorry, this item is for FY13. So in our current year, as we're coming up towards the end of the year, we've got a number of changes here in the general fund where we proposed budgeting $7.4 million in fund balance to go for three projects. One of those, $4 million for sidewalks. And as part of that, we would transfer that funds to the CIP, the Capital Improvement Projects Fund. So that fund is being amended by $4 million. We've got $2 million to support the Oklahoma City National Museum and Memorial. That would be a payment to them out of the general fund. And then $1.4 million for the improvements at Will Rogers Tennis Center. That would also be a transfer to our special purpose fund where it would be combined with the fundraising that Oklahoma City Public Tennis is doing for those improvements there. So there's also a change to the special purpose fund to incorporate that. We've got a small change in the E911 fund. We've normally had a high vacancy, high turnover rate in that fund. But with some of the changes that they've made in scheduling and staffing, they haven't had the same number of vacancies as they normally do. So we've had to budget some additional fund balance in the E911 fund to cover that. That's actually a good thing that they're keeping their folks working and on staff there. The hotel motel tax is being amended by $150,000. This is the 1/11th portion that goes towards promotion of events. There's an event that the Convention and Visitors Bureau works with that was in July. Last summer is in June this summer. Normally that doesn't happen where it's in the same fiscal year. So that's why they're asking for an increase there of $150,000. And also in the special purpose fund, we received $10,000 from Nichols Hills, City of Nichols Hills for improvements at Northwest 63rd in Penn that we're doing. They're going to participate in that. So we put that money in its own fund so we can make sure it's spent for the right purpose. And then finally, Water and Wastewater Utilities has asked for $700,000 in additional authority to stock up, build up their inventory in preparation for summer just so that they're, they've got all the pipe and supplies that they need on hand to respond if we had a similar summer to last year. And then finally, $175,000 for a pilot program to reduce sewer backups related to fats, oils, and grease. They're trying a new program there and they've asked for additional budget authority there. Both of those pieces would be funded from transfers from the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. So it's 12 and 1/2 million dollars in total that would be a change to the FY13 fiscal year budget.
All right, and this is a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 8M? All right, comments or questions from council?
I have a comment about the sidewalk portion of it. These are sidewalks that were supposed to be done from the MAPS fund, is my understanding.
No, it was, it's, the master plan was paid for by the MAPS III sidewalk study. But these may or may not have been included. The MAPS, the MAPS study isolated 113 miles, I think, of sidewalks. It ought to be a council priority at some point. And this is general fund money to supplement the amount that MAPS III has funded. That satisfy your answer?
Well, that isn't what I understood. I mean, if that's a fact, I guess it has to satisfy me. But that's not the way I understood it.
That's the way I understood it. The rest of the council nodding their heads? All right.
We've got a lot of sources of projects. Eric talked about two this morning. We've got some federal dollars that were being used in some school areas. We've got some TIF dollars that are being used in sidewalk projects where we're now requiring developers to put more in. We have put some in with the geo-bond projects as we go forward. We had a piece that was to be put in with MAPS III and there's a desire by, I think, most of the council that, you know, more sidewalks is better. So we're supplementing our efforts by the $4 million. I think a catalyst of that, Councilman White, was because of the fact the bids came in or the estimates came in a little bit higher on the MAPS III and we weren't able to do all the way anticipated.
A year or so ago, we discussed how many miles maybe that the, of sidewalks were going to be built out of the MAPS, which was substantially under what we had projected before during the campaign, under the mileage that we projected during the campaign. And so it seems to me that if we're taking general fund money to do something that we plan to do or propose to do in order to be consistent, we ought to, that money ought to come out of the MAPS contingency fund. Now, I don't want, I don't want to slow down sidewalk building, but it seems to me that has, have, has the MAPS contingency fund been addressed to find, to look for the additional money for the sidewalks that we promised during MAPS?
My opinion is, we could do that, but I would still rather wait a little bit further into the MAPS III funding process to make sure we're going to have enough money to fund the projects and meet the budgets. We're still not quite halfway through the funding process. We're running, as you know, a few million dollars ahead. But if, if we're, if our target is to complete this sidewalk study of over 100 miles, we're going to need this regardless. And I just want to see the council continuing to support the construction of sidewalks. And I would love to see at some point, if there's MAPS III, you know, supplemental dollars, we can come back in and do some more. But I'd like to see us do this when we can. And it, you know, it seems like the money's there and the will from the council is there to continue to do it.
I certainly don't want to be perceived as on the side of not doing more sidewalks. That, that's not where I'm coming from.
Then, then vote yes.
My, my concern is that, as I say, I've said this before. If, if the convention center came in over, I don't have any doubt, or if we couldn't build the convention center, our reaction would not be, well, let's find $4 million out of the general fund. We'd be, we'd be going to the contingency money like a rat on a cheeto. And, and I don't believe, I think it's because sidewalks really, we, we talk the talk, but we're not walking the walk. Sidewalks don't have the priority that some of these other frill programs do have.
Well, we think, yeah, we didn't budget nearly as much as, as we probably should have in the MAPS III budget. But, you know, it is what it is. I mean, first, as that goes.
I understand that, but I want to point, I just want to be sure that I've continued to be on record as, as opposing the use of general fund money until the money out of MAPS is used for these purposes.
I'd like to
But I'm going to vote for it because I'm not going to be on record as voting against sidewalks either.
I just want to echo what Pete's saying. And I think, I think President has said in our bonds, if we have a bond project and we underestimate because we use four-foot sidewalks instead of five or six-foot sidewalks when we've never done four-foot sidewalks, we would go to the unlisted funds to make it whole and deliver on the bond project. We wouldn't go to the general fund to, to make it whole. So here, we promised 75 miles of sidewalks. We made a mistake, which was that we used four-foot in our estimate. So it would seem that, that the analogous maneuver would be to go to the contingency fund and, and, and get your 75 miles before you go to the general fund.
A couple of things I think are different here. Part of the reason for the cost difference in the MAPS III budgeting is, is that we sought highly-developed areas of the city to build those sidewalks. It's, in a certain sense, part of the problem is a quality over quantity. We could have gone to the suburban areas where it was just open land and built sidewalks on a much similar budget than, than what we proposed. Still might not have hit the budget, but it would have been, would have been much closer. And here, and it's important to keep in mind that what, that, that the sidewalk plan, that the MAPS III sidewalk plan laid out for us is far and beyond what we ever promised the voters. And so these are additional sidewalk miles that we would hope to do someday. And I think in, in, at this time, there's the will of the council to partially address the, the, the underperformance of, of the MAPS III budget with some additional dollars. But at the same time, these aren't, I, I would not reflect this as supplementing the MAPS III aspect of it as this, point out, these are general fund dollars to continue our support of the MAPS III sidewalk plan regardless of the MAPS III budget and, and, and the estimates that come in.
My only, my only problem with that is that we would have known before that we were going to put sidewalks in highly-developed areas. We weren't planning on putting them in, we were going to put them in places where the demand was, near schools and on highly trespass arterials. And we used four-foot sidewalks. I mean, I think those are the two main, that's the main reason we came under. And so we weren't, we were able to deliver about half of what was promised, which is about 30 to 35 miles instead of 75 miles.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
Thanks.
May I ask a question? This, just from a historical perspective, on the requirements for sidewalks as it relates to new developments, for example, during the '60s, '70s, and '80s, and if Russell needs to address this, that's fine. We didn't have a requirement to where new development, new developments were not required to include sidewalks. But since about, what year did we begin doing that? Or made a greater emphasis?
Late '90s. Russell, do you recall when that requirement went through?
I don't, I should know that. I think it was early 2000s, actually, so.
So we've got a lot of catching up to do. And if we take it a step further and now not only require at least one side of a arterial street to have sidewalks, but possibly both sides with some developments, we've got even more work to catch up on. So I understand everybody's anxiousness to try to catch up, but we're talking in terms of 40, maybe 50 years of no requirements with respect to sidewalks. I don't think you're going to overcome that deficiency in a matter of few years, even with the special bond issue. It's, it's a big, we've got 622 square miles to deal with. But anyway, I think it's helpful for people to understand how we got to where we are now with respect to a lack of, of sidewalk miles. It was just something that was not addressed for 40 to 50 years in our city's history during the time of probably our greatest expansion as far as residential development and, and expansion out to the city limits. So I think we just have to show some patience with respect to catching up.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand about where I'm coming from. It has nothing to do with that. But where I'm coming from is where the money comes to finish the 75 miles of sidewalks we promised to MAPS III.
Well, I'll tell you what, Pete, once we get on the second half of the funding cycle, and I think that would and I think that would be like December of this year, why don't you come up with a plan to start using contingency money?
I can keep quiet till December.
Yeah.
About this.
Yeah, on, on December, we could start looking at, we'd be in the second half of the collection cycle. It might be more appropriate to start thinking, it looks like we're going to be running ahead.
All right, okay.
Okay? But we're still going to need this regardless.
I agree, I agree.
To get to the 113 miles. All right, somewhere in there, I think there was a motion. And is there a second? All right. We're voting on a, a series of budget amendments. This is item 8M. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8N is a public hearing, and this is the adoption of the budget. Doug is here to answer any questions. Doug, anything you want to say?
I'm going to go over the highlights of the budget.
Okay.
One of the things we try to do with the budget is, is we're carrying over our, our basic services and then a couple of council priorities that are, that are out there. One is, is police. We added 40 positions, not all uniform positions last year, but 40 positions last year, 40 uniform positions this year. And, you know, it may not be enough, but it's, it's certainly a step in the right direction, and probably about as many as practically we can add to get them up onto the department. And adding some money for transit, a million dollars that were, were put in to help implement the recommendations that come out of the Nelson-Niagara study. I think we all agree that transit's an area of, of some focus that we want to take, take a look at. Sidewalk has been a focus with council. We just kind of address that issue to, to a limited amount. And then, of course, streets is always a priority, and we will be addressing that with some additional fund balance money, as Mr. McAteer is smiling after the first of the year sometime. And so what we did is tried to, you know, take the basic organization and add to it and strengthen some areas that we've heard as council priorities in the past.
Right, so just continuing with what Mr. Couch said there, the, another significant change was moving 29 firefighters from grant funding during the recession. We had federal grant funds to help pay for 29 firefighters, so we didn't have to let them go. We're now moving those back to the general fund. Overall, the increase in the budget's 51 positions, again, the 40 police positions, seven positions in utilities, three in airports. There are other changes throughout the department's ups and downs, but, and the net is 51. And just to put that in perspective, we've put up here the chart showing the number of positions over the last 12 years or so, back to our last sort of peak level of staffing. In 2002, we had 4,552 positions. This year, we'll have 4,580. So just a little over one, or about 1% growth during a time when our population has increased by, by over 16%. You know, as, as we stated during the council workshop, we have a very low number of employees per 1,000 citizens. When we compare that with our peer cities, our ratio's 7.62 employees per 1,000 residents compared with the average of our peer cities of about 10 per, per 1,000 citizens. So when we look at the numbers overall, the general fund is just over $400 million. Our other operating funds, about $260 million. Our non-operating, mostly capital funds, $414 million. So the total budget, $1,279,000. So again, this is the first year that we've had a budget over $1 billion. I won't go into a lot of detail here on the revenues. Again, this is for the whole budget. Sales tax is our key revenue source, as you know. It's about 40% of our total, and as sales tax goes, so goes our, our budget. On the expenditure side, personal services is the largest expense we have there, 43%. Again, this is of the total budget, so this includes our debt service fund, which is on there. Our capital funds, capital outlays are about a quarter of our budget, as well as other services and supplies. And so what you have before you is the budget that will take effect July 1st for fiscal year 14. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank my staff. I've got, maybe if they could all stand up for a second here from the Office of Management and Budget. I appreciate all the work they've put in to help make this possible. So, thank you all very much.
Your Honor.
Uh huh.
Just from a financial standpoint, I would say that moving the 29 firefighters from our grant to a general fund perspective is, is just like hiring 29 additional firefighters. So adding almost additional 70 public safety employees, uniform employees, I think is quite significant as we continue to try to maintain a, a, a tight budget and not allowing it to expand too much. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the budget itself? All right, did anyone here hope, show up today hoping to speak on the budget? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Want to thank the staff for all the work that went into the budget process. What was the general fund total this year?
Just over 400.
400 million, all right. Item 8O is a revocable permit to hold the Gladiator-5K mud run. It's in Ward 7. John, you okay with this? Are you going to participate in the 5K mud run?
I'm definitely okay with it. Under, under council announcements.
You're going to follow my lead on the involvement.
Under council announcements, I do have something in line to talk about with it.
Okay.
But I'm okay with it.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? Did anyone show up that's a part of this event? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Cast your votes. Item 8O passed unanimously. Item 8P is an emergency resolution. This has to do with the storms of May 31st.
Mayor, as we did after the tornado of, of May 20th, this is a resolution confirming the actions we did and declaring a proclamation of a state of emergency. Unlike the May 20th event where that has been declared a national emergency, the May 31st has not yet at this time. The governor has made the request for that to have happened, but, but the feds have not done that at this point in time. The difference being is that on the May 20th efforts that we're having, there will be federal participation to offset our costs that we're, that we're doing for cleanup in, in other areas in there. At, they'll pick up 85%, the state will share the rest of that with us. And so we have had two contractors working for a couple of weeks now doing the cleanup on, on, on the May 20th effort. On the May 31st effort, not as much severe damage. I think there were 32 homes, no, no homes were destroyed. 32 homes had major damage, or 32 structures, I don't know if they were all homes. I think actually most of them were not homes, that had major damage to them in, in a much wider area. And so we are also picking up the debris from that on a defined area that we have. And we have a contract in place started last Wednesday to start picking that debris up. It may or may not be reimbursed, the cost of, of that debris removal, but we're picking it up in, in the same way we, we take care of our citizens in, in storm events similarly in the past. And so that's the summary of, of the resolution.
Jim, with respect to picking up the debris, we've had some damage in Ward 3. I don't know whether James has had any in Ward 1 or not. And the inner cities have had, had some damage. Could you have somebody just speak before we go off the air today about what the citizens who have damage from the May, the last storm, what they need to do?
The May 31st.
The May 31st storm.
Frank's here right now.
Could he just tell our citizens how, what they need to do to get that picked up?
The city has a phone number. It's the customer service phone number for utilities department. If they will call that number and report that they have debris that they've placed out by the curb, then the utilities department can put that on their, their list, and we'll know to come by and pick it up.
Is the correct number 297-6033? Can we get, can we just have somebody?
Yeah, well, we can confirm that.
Could you confirm that before we go off the air?
Yes, sir. Just want to point out, though, that it's, the, the area of, is hundreds of square miles that we're collecting the trash on. So, so we're, we're outworking diligently on it, but it is, we're not going to get it all done this week. It'll be, it'll be several weeks before we, we get through.
Jim, excuse me, on the definition of debris, is it mainly limbs and things like that, or is it just?
Because the, the May 31st storm was a combination of low-scale tornadoes, straight-line winds, and flooding, any debris that's related to those events. So we have a lot of vegetative debris, tree limbs, trees. We also have a few, not a few, but we have some structures that were flooded. So we may have carpet, carpet padding. We may have a few items that were, you know, on the floor when they flooded, and they can bring those out to the curb as well.
Marsha, do you have the number?
I never called customer service. I think it's 2333, 297-2333. The, there's also another number, there are a couple of numbers approved. We'll get you a summary list. The folks can call us at the normal customer service number that's available on the web and somewhere in these, in these printouts I brought with me. I apologize.
We'll verify that number by the end of the meeting.
I want to make it clear that we are out picking up debris. Both contractors and city crews are out picking up debris. If you have a concern, we know that people beat us to the curb, and we know that the whole block won't have everything at the curb at the same time. It's normal, it's what we do. A little confusing because we've had so many storms so quickly in Oklahoma City, but, but we are responding. The contractors are doing a really good job. City staff's out there as well.
All right, are we ready to vote on item 8P?
297-2833.
297-2833? That's what, it's been verified.
All right, do we have a motion on item 8P?
No.
And a second? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8Q is a resolution that approves our new emergency operations plan, or at least the revisal of it.
We're making some slight modifications to it. Frank, could you go over those changes?
I'll just go over the changes and dispense with going through the whole PowerPoint. We made four changes to the emergency operations plan. One of those was in the hazard probabilities tables. We worked with the National Weather Service, the Oklahoma Climatological Survey, and the Oklahoma Geological Survey to review those probabilities. And with the input of the experts, we changed some of those probabilities. Many of them moved upwards, so indicating a, a higher probability that those events would occur or impact our city. And part of that was because of comments that were made last year by council. One of those was questioning the probability we had for drought. And so we said, well, let's go back and let's revisit these. So we do listen to what you say, and, and when it's part of the review, we, we reassess those probabilities. So we think, based on what the experts told us, that the, the probabilities we have listed are, are accurate for our current situation or environment. Another change we made under concept of operations is we've incorporated the five mission areas and core capabilities that are used by U.S. Department of Homeland Security and FEMA as outlined in the National Preparedness Goal. That way, our emergency operations plan now syncs with other FEMA doctrine and guidelines. A third area was in Appendix F, which is the Multi-Agency Coordination Center Appendix. We completely redid that using information we had received, or I had received while attending the Emergency Manager Basic Academy. So I incorporated some of that into the document, as well as reformatting it. And some of those practices that we've added to that document, we've already applied. We stood up the Multi-Agency Coordination Center on Sunday for the Memorial Marathon. We also stood up on May 20th, the day of the tornado. And those practices that we've incorporated in that appendix have paid off in better coordination and resolution, a quick resolution of any issues or problems, as well as being able to provide better coordination and to eliminate any duplication of effort. And then the fourth area was in the Public Protection Evacuation Annex. We went in and, and we added some additional material to better flush out or, or more, have a more comprehensive document. We specifically wanted to add some material in there having to do with long-term care facilities, with schools, jails, and also talking a little more about the mass evacuation process and fine-tuning some of the, the details or processes there.
Okay, questions for Frank? How about a motion then to approve item 8Q? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Item 8R is a resolution that we amend the 2000 to 2020 Oklahoma City Plan, and Russell is here to speak to this. Want to give us a little more information here, Russell?
This is in relation to a subdivision that the council has already approved. When we get an application for a rezoning of land that is not in conformance with the plan, we ask the applicant to come back with, to us with information justifying why we should support an amendment to the plan. They did that. We did not recommend approval of it, but the Planning Commission saw fit to approve it, and the council has already considered that. So this is now an amendment to, to the plan to justify, to support that, that subdivision.
Is this Ward 1 or Ward 3?
It's Ward 3.
3, okay. Larry, you want to make a motion then?
Yes, I, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for reconsidering this and recognizing some changes in condition and having some common sense, quite frankly, to do this. And I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 8R? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8S is a resolution asking the Urban Renewal Authority to do a hotel study. Comments or questions here?
We have a brief presentation that we'd like to provide to the city council this morning about the Convention Center Hotel project and process to make sure that you understand kind of the, the process that we're considering to move this project forward. First of all, we've provided you with a copy of the handouts, and I'm Kathy O'Connor. I'm the Executive Director of the Urban Renewal Authority and the President of the Alliance for Economic Development. The first thing that I want to point out to you, that this is the beginning of a process, and this is really the very first step in evaluating the Convention Center Hotel feasibility for Oklahoma City. The Convention Center Hotel project was mentioned as a part of the MAPS III campaign literature and, and campaign materials as a part of the Phase 1 development of a new convention center. But in order to begin that process, we wanted to go through the analysis and all of the feasibility studies that are necessary to make sure that we know the size of the Convention Center Hotel that's appropriate for Oklahoma City, whether or not that, that facility will need meeting room space, and then to begin to do the financial projections so that we have a better idea of whether or not we want to go forward with this project. This morning, the, the item that's before you proposes to designate the Urban Renewal Authority as the agent to lead the redevelopment or the development of a Convention Center Hotel. This is a process that is similar to what we did with the Skirvin Hotel, where the Urban Renewal Authority was designated as the entity to act on the city's behalf to redevelop the hotel and assemble a team of people to help make that happen. The first steps that we are proposing that the city undertake as a part of the evaluation of a Convention Center Hotel is, first of all, to complete a market study. We have retained consultants through the alliance to look at MAPS III projects and prepare a market study of all aspects of real estate development in adjacent areas to MAPS III projects, such as the Coors Ashore area or areas adjacent to the new Convention Center site. That market study includes retail, office, residential, and other commercial development, and it also had a hospitality component. So one of the aspects of the, the presentation today will be a presentation by that market study consultant so that you know where we are with that process, which is also just in the beginning phases. The other part of the resolution before you today proposes to amend the city's agreement with public financial management. And public financial management is the city's independent financial advisory firm, assists you with all of the different bond issues that the city undertakes, general obligation bond issues, revenue bond issues. They also have a public-private partnership component of their firm, and we're proposing to amend the PFM contract to include some additional services to retain PFM to help us with the evaluation of the Convention Center Hotel. So we also have PFM here, Tom Marsh, from their public-private partnership office, to make a presentation to you and describe what the process will be as we move forward with PFM. And after that, I'll, I'll ask Jeremy Stone to come forward and talk a little bit about the market study.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. As Kathy said, I'm Tom Marsh with PFM. I'm based in Chicago. I run our P3 group across the country, and 98% of our clients, I think, are public entities that we represent in transactions that engage, engaging the public or private sector together. that we represent in transactions that engage, engaging the public or private sector together to do projects together. So we do that across the country with lots of different cities and states, as they explore alternative ways to finance and develop projects. As Kathy indicated, we're going to pull together input from you and others regarding objectives, regarding what the city's desires are with respect to the Convention Center, how that hotel component may or may not fit into that, and build a pro forma model to look at what the expected financial performance of the hotel would be on a going-forward basis. We have found that that is a very good approach in order to help you to understand the policy issues associated with the hotel and the components there, and to the extent that it helps clarify goals that you may have relative to the project. For example, minimizing public subsidies or eliminating them altogether and figuring out a way to best engage and provide the support you can do to help develop the project. We'll be receiving input from the hotel consultant, which will drive projections on things like occupancy, amenities and size and adjacency and those kinds of issues associated with the hotel. And we'll hope to bring that together with a variety of policy issues that you and others will present, and come back to you with some options and some thoughts about how to move forward. Happy to address any other detailed questions. We, in the next slide, have a kind of timeframe. We'd expect to be able to quickly hit the ground running here. The quicker we think we get these things done, the better, and have some kind of ideas with you by the end of the summer. Our approach is very interactive with you and very iterative. We don't have a preconceived notion of the outcomes here. We really expect that this be driven and done around what your objectives are, both financial and policy, so that you end up, at the end of the day, with something, you don't have to have a surprise at the end of the day. You have an expectation.
I think it's important. We do not want this to be predetermined, that the ROI has to work on this. Are there other cities that have recently gone through the process, not five years ago or not 10 years ago? Are there other cities out there that you can rely upon that have some more recent data?
Yes, and we're working with quite a few right now. I mean, we're working with New Orleans, Philadelphia, Portland, Baltimore, a number of cities right now our team is working with. There's plenty of data out there. I think that one of the things that's changed, and at least my view of what's changed, is that there used to be an expectation, certainly on the part of hotel people, that they were looking for how big the subsidy would be. And we basically try to do the analysis at the front end that either eliminates that altogether or else, or gets a more fair balance of contributions from the parties. Often, cities issue an RFP, and they see they're on a fishing expedition to see what they get back, and depending on what they get back, they then negotiate from that point. What we're trying to do is build the model, build the data, use real-life benchmarks, Mayor, as you indicated, from other cities. Let's track that performance, let's see what those metrics are, and then build that into an expected deal here.
You know, this is a lot of money for an assessment, so I'd urge the council either now or in the near future to let them know what it is we're looking for. I'd hate to get to the end of this process and think, you know, what we really should, the question we really should be asking is something else. So let's make sure that whatever questions we're trying to determine from this study get answered by the study. So the best time to make sure that those are confronted is early in the process. Any comments today about that?
I certainly do. Do we want to hear from the other consultant first, and then I've got some questions?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Jeremy Stone with Stone Hospitality and Real Estate. I've been retained by the alliance and the Urban Renewal to go through the process of a market study. I'll say right up front, that's an independent study, so again, no preconceived ideas or notions of whether it's even needed at this point. So that's one of the things that we'll be looking at. I've been doing specifically hotel market studies for the last six or seven years. Prior to that, I have teaching experience at the University of Oakland, specifically teaching market analysis and market studies on entertainment, retail, all sorts of development, and prior to that, in the golf industry. So I'm no stranger to this. The last six to seven years specifically with hotel-related projects, including some cities that I would say are in a similar situation to what you see here. For example, the city of Jackson, Mississippi, they have a 330,000-square-foot convention center, and still, to this point, no headquarters hotel. So that's a case where they've been going through the process and not determined to continue forward with the hotel, at least to this point. So I just briefly will go through the process that we're going to look at, and it's very typical of a market study. We'll look at the economic demographic data of Oklahoma City and the area, determine the lodging census. Obviously, that can be related to full-service hotels, limited-service hotels, and make determinations of what metrics may be affected by the addition of rooms. In this case, potentially full-service or some combination of limited service may satisfy. As you know, the Convention Center has already been predetermined, so we'll be looking at the size and the increase in capacity that's going to be provided by the new Convention Center in the analysis. If it is necessary, we'll look at the types of brands that may be possible in the market, determine what the amenities, the size, eventually will come down to a range of rooms, if there are rooms necessary, how they will interact with the Convention Center, and estimate the performance of those rooms in the market, be it a certain brand or a level of brand, say, for example, a three-star hotel, four-star hotel. Beyond that, once we've assumed and determined whether or not it's a necessity for additional rooms in the market, we'll proceed forward based on that to a specific site. I know there are a couple currently possible, and so we'll assess which site might be the best fit to interact with the city in general and the Convention Center that's planned, and proceed, along with PFM, to determine the financial performance of that hotel. They will use the expected performance of that to determine the best steps going forward. So in summary, the hotel market study is going to give you information, information to make a good decision. It doesn't have a preconceived idea of whether or not you need it. If you do, then I will tell you. That's the luxury and the privilege of being independent, is I have no stake in whether you need it or not. So I will be happy to tell you if you do, and I'll be happy to tell you if you don't. And then this will be the basis for, as Tom mentioned, determining the feasibility, whether or not you can afford it, how you will afford it, and what the process may be going forward. And I'd be happy to be involved in that. Couple of frequent questions, just in case you have them up front. At what point is it going to be determined feasible? Obviously, there's continuing process, and this is just the beginning, whether there's an economic impact, how much you're willing to spend, how much a developer may be willing to spend, and what the difference is between that and what the gap might be in getting to an agreement. And with that, I'll just offer up any questions?
Where are you based out of?
I'm in Dallas.
Yeah, Pat?
Is your work sequential or parallel to the work that PFM's doing? Do you have to finish your efforts first?
I will finish the market analysis.
Before they start their work?
Right.
And what is your timetable call for your completion?
I'm just getting started, so probably the next four weeks. There is a step in there where there's an opportunity for me to come back prior to, to sort of give an update on where this is trending, where it might fall, and what sort of size, if any, the hotel might be. And then, obviously, once there's some consensus or some determination of the data on what that should look like, then I will proceed with the performance and the operating performance.
Thank you.
Councilman, one thing I'd like to say is that some of the work that PFM is going to be doing can begin right away and run parallel to the market study. For example, interviewing all of you, interviewing other stakeholders, all of those kinds of things can go ahead and begin right away.
Okay. Ed, and then James?
I think a couple of things. First, I need to address the idea, if you're asking what, to make it clear what we want in this study, is above all paramount is transparency and a full public disclosure of everything that we're doing. I really take issue with the idea that this was fully vetted in MAPS III. I really take issue with that this was in the campaign literature, and it's really pouring salt in the wound, to some extent, to lead off with that, since it was brought up. I mean, I would just invite anyone, go to the YouTube videos of MAPS III. Go to one called About MAPS III. It's about 6 minutes and 3 seconds long. Go to the 4-minute and 2-second mark, where we start talking about the Convention Center. What was promised is that when the Convention Center was completed, we would add 700 jobs and triple the amount of convention business, even though no city in the country has ever been able to triple its convention business. No city in the country has ever been able to double its convention business. There was no mention of a hotel, and that no hotel in the last decade, of which there is lots of data, has been able to be built without massive taxpayer subsidies. That was not mentioned, and to give the impression that it was in any way is not okay. We had a study that talked about it, the Convention Sports and Leisure Study, that to this day has not been released to the public. We have withheld that study, which talks about this, the only study. We have withheld that from the public. And so the idea that there's been maximum transparency embedding with the public is not okay. The idea that we're talking about spending $100,000 on a consultant who mentions not once but twice the possibility that we could eliminate public subsidies is stunning, stunning, because there is so much data, and it has cost governments so much to get these projects done. Nashville, Tennessee, which came online this week, financed half of the construction costs, $128 million in property tax abatements for 20 years. Washington, D.C., 1,200-room hotel next year, bonds for 50% of the construction costs. Columbus and Cleveland, fully public financed. My understanding is that with the '86 Tax Reform Act, cities cannot, you can't just use normal revenue bonds. You've got to have a nonprofit that issues things like, issues revenue bonds, and that entity would have to own the hotel, would have to issue the revenue bonds and own the hotel. Are we ready for that? That's what Phoenix, San Antonio, Baltimore have all done. They've all created the Phoenix Downtown Convention Authority. Is that what we're prepared to do? Because that's what we're going to have to do if it goes towards revenue bonds, which we don't have enough TIF dollars. We can't use MAPS III. I mean, that would appear to be where we're headed. But the problem is that Wall Street and bond rating agencies are no longer going to accept, as they did in the past, that you can just pledge the revenue from the hotel to get your bond. That's not good enough anymore, because these hotels so consistently underperform, with the prototype example being the Renaissance Inn Hotel in St. Louis, which is now in foreclosure. So you can't pledge the revenue of the hotel anymore. You've got to have a coverage ratio of 1.5 to 1. You've got to have a revenue stream that's above, 50% above, what is needed for debt service. And what that means is that cities are having to pledge a dedicated revenue source to supplement whatever revenue the hotel generates. You can't do it, or you haven't been able to do it any other way. Columbus dedicated all their parking meter revenue. Baltimore and San Antonio have donated a significant portion of their hotel and motel tax. Dallas, part of their general fund. Phoenix, their car rental tax. What revenue stream are five of us ready to commit? What dedicated funding source are five of us ready to commit to back, stop, revenue bonds, owned by a nonprofit outside of the city of Oklahoma City? Or come up with $100, $150, $200 million to finance 50% or more of the construction costs? That's the kind of money that we're talking about. So without having any idea of where our existing downtown hotel stock is, have we talked to our downtown hotel stock? Are they worried about government coming in and subsidizing an entity and competing against them? Have we heard from them at this point in the process? I'm not sure why these are done in parallel. This is a tremendous amount of money. I've looked at as many Convention Center Hotel studies as I can in the last 10 years. I haven't seen any performed by Mr. Stone. I have seen, he worked at PKF before, very, very few. I can't find any, but I've been told they've done some limited numbers of work on Convention Center Hotels. I haven't seen a financing study, or how to finance hotels. So I'm wondering why these need to be done in parallel, which would seem to me to predetermine the outcome. Is there a reason that we can't do the market analysis, which is, I'm reading here, is going to determine the size, and then figure out what we're trying to finance? Are we trying to finance a 350-room hotel, a 600-room, a 1,000? What kind of subsidy is going to be required? What are we trying to finance? It would seem that you do the market analysis, which would take two months, and then do the $100,000 study, if we're all in agreement that we want to move forward. And so that would be my question. Would there be a downside to doing them sequentially as opposed to parallel?
We can do them sequentially, if that's what the city council desires. I had mentioned that they could be done parallel, so that we could meet with all of you and get your thoughts and objectives and what you, any questions that you had while the market study was being completed. But if the council desires to do them sequentially, we certainly can do it that way.
James, you want to say something?
The sequential thing is a problem that I have also. I don't feel like we need to be spending $100,000 to do something that seems to be in the incorrect order.
Yeah.
So that's the first problem I have. And then the second problem is, this is clearly a MAPS-style project, and I think one of the biggest successes in the MAPS program has been that we've been very upfront in what we're going to do, and then the city delivers on it. Because I agree with Councilman Shadid that in the marketing, I don't ever remember hearing anything about a hotel going along with the Convention Center, and it's clearly not being fun through the MAPS fund. So those are the two main problems I have, and that's why I won't be voting for it.
Ed, you also seem to be questioning the credentials of the consultants. Do you want to get more in on that, on if these are the right people we need to hire? Because this is a lot of money if these aren't the right people.
Well, I mean, they can answer, you know, as to their credentials. I mean, I'm just, my question would be, I'm not seeing, as I review the literature, I'm not seeing your name pop up. And so can you assure us that? Go ahead. Yeah?
Well, I think, you know, PFM has a long history of providing independent advice to our clients, and we would expect to do that here. We've developed a pretty robust process around P3 that involves not just, you know, in our, just in my experience, taking independent assessments of whether it be a in our, just in my experience, taking independent assessments of whether it be a toll road, a parking lot, a hotel, a water system, any number of things that government invests in. Taking those studies independently, separate from clarity around your objectives and your goals for the project is a difficult way to analyze things. That's why what we proposed is at the front end of the work that we do, that we would be working very closely with you on getting clarity around your objectives, ranking those objectives, and then using those objectives to help formulate the criteria for how you evaluate financial things. Because financial things in and of themselves, unless they're against policy considerations, which you have to decide upon, are difficult decisions to make. That's just our experience.
Yeah. Have other cities done it sequentially?
Usually, what we do, we would recommend doing the front-end piece of what we're doing before the feasibility study. I mean, that's just...
But you've heard the concerns, though. Why would we even do that if there's not, if, you know, if there's not a need for it? So... What you're hearing is consideration from the council that we ought to do one before the other.
Right. And sometimes, the studies done in and of themselves without the context of your policy issues are studies in and of themselves, and they end up on the shelf. My experience, again, not making a broad statement, but in working with a lot of public-private partnership projects, especially when you're engaging the private sector, we have found that the front-end work, getting clarity around what your objectives are, both financially and policy-wise, also sends the market, also sends the right message to potential investors and developers that as you go further along in the process, you're able to be in a different position here. You're in the position of having facts, having knowledge, having information, as opposed to the process I described before, which is getting a bunch of proposals in, trying to wade through those, and looking at apples and oranges and grapefruits and saying, well, what do we think is best for Oklahoma City? So, we find the investment is well-made early. We could certainly sequence our work and not, you know, not be committed to, if a fee's a problem with $100,000, but doing some front-end work with you to lay the groundwork around objectives, I think, is a valuable approach. But that's obviously up to you. We could work it either way, depending on your concerns and however it works best for you.
Okay. Meg?
Mayor, that actually was going to be a question I was going to ask. Would there be a way that we could sequence your own piece of this, that we might break that contract into several deliverables and look at the evaluation part first and followed with the market feasibility study, and then put those two pieces together to come up with a potential strategy? Because I do think the one thing that we've learned about this, and I haven't studied convention centers for 10 years, but the one thing I do know about them is it appears that every single one in every market is different. There hasn't really been anything consistent in the way these things are financed or the way the packages are put together. You know, we do have a great success story here with a very complicated financing, public-private partnership with the Skirvin Hotel. And we know it can be done. And so, my hope here is that in the next couple of months, we're on a really steep learning curve about current possibilities and what Oklahoma City, in its unique position, might hold, so.
But, you know, if you're going to ask city council to define their objectives, which I think is a good point, Tom, the objectives have to change, reflect what the market study says. If the market study comes up zero, which Mr. Stone indicated was a possibility, then our objectives is different than it is if it came up, it's going to be a roaring success. But I think having the studies made sequentially, you know, in deference to Tom, though, I think we don't have objectives until we know what the market study shows. We ought to do it one step at a time. And the market study ought to come first and define what our objectives can be. If the market study shows a need for 1,000 rooms, then our objectives could be some way to fit around that. If the market studies shows no rooms at all are required, it's not a feasible project, then we have an entirely different set of objectives. I think we need to be responsive to what the market study says before we determine what our objectives are.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I disagree that the sequential way of doing it is a better way of doing it.
Kathy, how does this affect the contract and the dollar amount?
We can amend it however the council wants to. I mean, I don't think what you're talking about is doing them sequentially.
That's what I'm hearing.
I think we can either put off the amendment to PFM's contract until the market study's completed and bring it back to you, or set a start date in the amendment. I think you could do it either way, but I'm playing attorney, so.
All right.
We've got to put off the amendment until we have the results of the amended contract, we have the results of the market study. Because if the market study comes out zero, which I don't think it will, but if it does come out zero, then we're going to have to go any further. We won't have to have this amendment because there's no need for it at that point.
I agree.
Certainly would that way.
Excuse me. Put off the amendment until we get the results of the market study, I think would be the...
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
As I've listened to the information go back and forth, I see this falling into a couple of categories, and maybe I'm wrong, but I just want to share. I see some discussion in the opening remarks about past history, and I don't think that does any good to sit down here and debate yes or no, what did or didn't happen. So, I'm not going to address that. I do think that some of the information that was presented from up here was a little bit slanted in one way, but that's another issue. How do we proceed? I think, the question, and I would have for Jeremy, will you tell us if we need a hotel in your study, in the market study? Is that one of the things that will come out of the market study? I'm being real simplistic.
Yes.
Do we need a hotel?
Yes.
And will you tell us?
And that will come in the form of number of rooms.
Yeah, and that was my next thing. And you'll tell us how big a hotel it should be?
Right.
And whether it should have this amenity, that amenity, or this other amenity?
Yes.
And we can decide whether we think that's a valid conclusion that you made. We can dialogue back and forth and talk about it?
Right.
When you come out and report.
I don't spend your money, so if you want to build any or all of it, that's up to you. I will tell you what the market can bear and the results and the impact that adding any rooms might have on the market, existing hotels and proposed and incoming hotels that have been announced.
And then, once we have that, then we can decide how we want to structure, if we want to go forward, how we want to structure the deal, which I understand is pretty much the PFM's role in play.
Correct.
And then, the other piece of the puzzle that I see being discussed here, which I'm not sure this is the venue to do, is are the consultants that we're talking about capable of doing this? And I think we have to, at this point, I have to rely on Kathy, that she's vetted out the different consultants to do a market study and have picked Jeremy as the best source to get an independent reading and answer to the questions, do we need a hotel and how big it is? And so, I'm in favor of the sequential approach, and I'm in favor of continuing with Jeremy to address those questions and move forward.
Any other comments or questions? Kathy, how would you advise the motion to take place here? Based on what you've heard from the council and trying to set up some sort of sequence for these two studies?
You could strike the portion of the resolution that approves addendum number one to the professional services agreement with PFM, but adopt the rest of it that directs urban renewal to begin the process.
See, Wiley just ran into the room, but that's what I, exactly what Kathy said is what I was going to suggest, is I don't have the resolution actually in front of me, but based on the agenda wording, if you just strike the portion where it says "approving the addendum number one" and all provisions in the resolution relating to that, I think that probably would do it.
And Wiley is nodding.
All right. How about a motion then to reflect what Kathy said? All right. Any other comments or questions from anyone? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you, guys, for being here today and answering the questions the best you could. We look forward to the results of the study. All right, we're on to item 8T. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
All right. We have a second. Cast your votes. That item is struck. Item 8U, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. How about a motion then to move item 8U to executive session? Cast your votes. Item moves to executive session. Item 8V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8V? All right. How about a motion? Do we have a second? Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. We have two items there. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any of those items? All right, then a motion on item 9. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Puts us on to item 10. This is items from council. And Pete, I think this is your recommendation on staggering the terms for judges.
Yes, it is. We've looked at the Judiciary Committee, along with the District of Councilman Mcatee, have looked at the terms of the... Thank you. Have looked at the concerns we have with regard to being in a position where we have to appoint all four judges for two-year terms at the same time. Really doesn't give us really much flexibility. We've looked at the city charter that requires, that says the terms will be for two years, and we have a legal opinion that says that we could expand that. We couldn't contract it to one year, but we could expand it to appoint two judges for three years and then the other two for two years, and that way, we'd have two judges coming up every time. And that's what this FATAL states. We've worked with the municipal council's office to determine whether that, they believe that was permissible under the charter, and I think the agreement is that it is permissible under the charter, and that's all this amounts to.
Okay. Comments or questions on this item? It's just being introduced today. We'll have a public hearing set for June 18th.
Sounds like a really good idea.
All right. Pete, you want to make the motion?
So, I move approval of 10A.
All right. Cast your votes. That item approves unanimously. And Ed, you have a resolution here requiring sprinklers in new home construction.
Well, actually, just requiring study of the Building Code Commission. There's no action on the part of the council. It's just asking the Build Code Commission to study the issue. This came out of when we were, had discussions about our ISO rating and how we were trying to find solutions to deliver 250 gallons of minute for two hours in areas off of the water, without water infrastructure. It came out of discussions with Chief Brian and others in the fire department, and we started to look at the number of such incidents. From September of 2011 to September of 2012, there were about 61 of these fires. And the issue was, could you, what would be the utility in mandating residential sprinklers? I would like to amend this to add six words. After sprinkler systems, I'd like to add "and/or onsite water supply alternatives." In other words, whether it's a water tank or something that our fire department can hook into to then, so they're not driving 20 miles back and forth with three tankers to try and find ways to deliver 250 gallons of minute. And how far this is, is variable. I know that in our current code, a 500-foot radius is recommended for residential and 300 for commercial. A requirement of 500 feet would be in line with the current water system guidelines, and 1,000 feet is the guideline used by ISO and their fire protection rating system. I don't think there's any illusion that residential sprinklers would necessarily save the structure. It's more that you save the occupants. When fire arrives, they, if there's fire sprinklers, they don't have to spend how these tankers, their initial water load, because the occupants are likely safe, so they can concentrate more on the structure. I don't know how many are around and then spread to the house as opposed to starting within the house and outside. These are all things I just want studied. I mean, I don't know the answer. I just, I'm asking for additional study.
Didn't we have a study made a couple of years ago on the indoor sprinkler system? It seemed like it was sort of inconclusive, but it was, it had a lot of basic facts.
Oh, there was a report done. I'm not sure how in-depth the study was, but there was a report done that talked about the insurance benefits of indoor residential sprinkler systems. There was talk about the failure rate of residential sprinkler systems, and I believe also the construction cost. There are, the city manager reported, or reported by the fire chief, I don't recall which.
But it might be the basis for, you know, a starting point?
Yes.
For what Ed's proposing.
Excuse me. I have a question as far as who would actually conduct the study?
I think he's sending it to the, our Oklahoma City Residential Building Code Commission for them to make a recommendation to the council.
Research and make a recommendation.
All right. So, Ed, have you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We're voting on item 10B. It passed unanimously. All right. Items from council. James, you have anything for us today? Ed? Larry? Yes?
That motion was to include Councilman Shadid's amendment. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you for clearing that up. Larry? Pete? David? Meg?
Okay, I'll be really fast. I just want to congratulate Mr. Park. They had an amazing picnic last Tuesday evening. Thursday evening, there was a kickoff event for the Capitol Campaign for Aztec Charter School for its new facility on General Pershing Boulevard. Great attendance. We also had a groundbreaking the other day for the Salvation Army Chesapeake Energy Center of Hope at 10th and Pennsylvania, which will be a huge anchor for that community. A very exciting project. And if everybody was in town this weekend, I mean, Oklahoma City had more things going on than you could imagine. Dead Center Film Festival, Pretty West, Red Earth, great parade Friday afternoon around the Marriott Gardens. It was an exciting time to be in Oklahoma City and just reflective, once again, of all the great things happening in our community.
All right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take the time to thank the men and women who helped for the recovery of the victims who were in the Deep Fork Creek. I had the opportunity to go out a couple of times last week to the Command Center, which was at Tinseltown. And those firefighters had to deal with a lot of things in the creek. Not only in the creek, but on the side of the creek. Some say it's a creek, some says it's a river. But anyway, I do want to take the time out to thank them for their hard work. And I also thank the police. Last week, there was a shooting in Ward 7, and I got word of a crime scene. I quickly went out, and I do want to thank the police for their quick response. Last week, I had the great opportunity to, for the first time, to take part of the Oklahoma City County Wellness Now Program. And I believe the Wellness Now Program is good for ZIP Code 73111, as well as other parts of Oklahoma City. So, I am now part of Wellness Now Program. I believe leaders must set the example, and I'm definitely going to set the example for as well as now in the 73111 ZIP Code. So, Mayor, give me a couple of months, and you and I are going to go on a jog through several trails through Ward 7. Coming up this weekend, Juneteenth Celebration, Washington Park, which is being sponsored by Perry Broadcasting Communications, along with several other entities. And again, that is this coming up Saturday, beginning, I want to say the official program begins at 2:00 PM at Washington Park. And also, I see the Neighborhood Alliance is here. The Neighborhood Alliance, I believe, do a great work in our city. I think eventually, we may need to look at how can we give better assistance to the Neighborhood Alliance. A couple more quick deals. I know I'm talking a lot since nobody else decided to give remarks, but said, let's help, Meg, I'm going to use that privilege. The adventure line, I think it's now time for us to truly talk about the adventure line. I know in the past, there's been some lengthy discussions about the adventure line, but I do believe it's time to move forth, see how can we get the adventure line up and going. Lastly, Maps for Kids, I believe, has been great for our city. I truly believe that. But however, Oklahoma City Public Schools need to do a better job when it comes to true schools. schools, which are in Ward 7, Northeast Academy and also Moon. And at a later city council meeting, I will discuss those two schools in detail. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Pat? All right, I had something. I bought a new fishing pole, bought a state fishing license, and I was fishing outside the city. Do I need a city fishing permit to fish inside city limits?
Yes.
And I'm asking this because I pretty much know, but I thought there might be others out there who might not know that you think if you buy a state license, that might allow you to fish in the state, but not necessarily.
Well, in the city, if you're in public waters. If you're in private waters, you don't.
Okay, so if you're in -- on your own private lake in the city?
Boy, I hope Wendell can come in and help me out on that because I'm pretty sure that's right. But I think if you're on private lakes, you do not need fishing permits. But if you're in public lakes like Delisi or Lake Hefner or those, you do need a city fishing license.
Here is Wendell.
Yes, sir. If you fish on a city-owned body of water, you need both state and city.
Okay, so that would include like Delisi Park?
It would.
Edwards Park?
Yes, sir.
And our larger reservoirs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if I want to fish for bass, Wendell, where should I go in our public?
Well, we just stocked 80 -- more than 80,000 bass in Lake Draper about a week ago. However--
How big are they?
They were only an inch and a half long.
Well, you small lures.
Lake Hefner has a healthy bass population, as does Overholser. Draper has bass, and it'll have more in a couple of years.
Okay, well, I will send pictures with all my results. But first, I have to get a city fishing permit. And where would I get that?
There are numerous. You find that on our website. But you approved a couple today of additional vendors. You can buy those at more than a dozen vendors around the community. Sporting is good stores, bait shops, most all have those.
And how much does that cost?
A daily, I believe, is $4, and I believe a yearly, I believe, is 15. Many people buy the daily if they're going to go a few times a year. If you're going to go regularly, of course, the annual is better.
Okay.
May I ask a question about Lake Draper? Is it open fully now for boating and all that?
That's probably -- there are still problems with getting a boat in. And so I would not advise anyone to go there with the expectation of being able to get their boat in. Fishing, on the other hand, of course, shoreline.
I don't think it's open.
Well, do you know when?
I don't think it's open. I don't think boats are--
No, sir, that's what I was trying to say. Yes, sir.
Lake Draper was drawn down a lot, 20-some feet, because we're doing maintenance on the pipeline. So we shut the pipeline down for many months. So we weren't able to put water into Lake Draper. Lake Draper has virtually no runoff into it. It's all water that's pumped up. And so those pumps were down. Lake Draper was brought down 22, 23 feet, somewhere along that a long ways. It's back up to about 12 feet down. So it's coming up. But right now, we're continuing to pump, but right now, we're almost taking out as much water, not quite, but we're almost taking out as much water to feed the demands in the system that we're putting into the lake.
So probably no time this summer.
Marcia's here.
And the question was?
Is Draper open at all for boats?
It's very difficult. It's still very difficult to get a boat in. A few people have gotten small skips in. We don't recommend it. It's going to be another four or five months.
Okay. Okay, so it's open, but we're not recommending it? That's the bottom line?
We're very excited. It's much higher than it has been, but we'd rather be allowed to go.
Okay. All right, fair enough. All right, city manager reports.
A couple this morning. First of all, we'd like to have a presentation by Sister Cities. Kathy Williams and Vicky Gorley are here with Sister Cities.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. Good morning, Mr. Couch.
Good morning.
I just wanted to call or come and thank you first for the grant that you've given us to the Sister Cities Oklahoma City and the amount of $8,800. We're very proud of the program that we've been building the last three years, although the program has been in existence since 1981. Just to give you a little bit of history, because I'm not sure everybody understands about the Sister Cities program, it is a city program whereby you have relationships with international cities that are comparable to your city. We have seven sister cities, and those are -- the original was in 1981 with Mayor Patience Sladding, and that was Taipei. And then since that time, the other mayors have brought on board Tainan, Taiwan, Haiko, the People's Republic of China, Pueblo, Mexico, Ulyanovsk, Russia, Rio de Janeiro, and our newest sister city in 2010 was Kigali City, Rwanda. You have charged us with developing and maintaining the Sister Cities program, trying to find value for the city, why this program should exist. And so we've begun from the bottom up, although, like I say, it's been in existence for 31 years. We're very pleased with this past year's accomplishments. In order to have memberships, you have to be a known entity. And unfortunately, we have not been a known entity within the city or with our residents. And so we have been trying to build that program, and the best way to do that is to offer luncheons and opportunities for people to come and learn more about us. We had our fourth annual Global Vision Award Luncheon last year, where we honored Mayor Ron Norick for all of the work that he's done globally and the fact that he is still involved in international cities as he is the Consular for South Korea, for the state of Oklahoma. So he not only was involved in the city level, but now with the state level. The previous winners of the Global Vision Award, our first award went to Judge Friat for his work that he has done with the legal system in Russia, in particular Moscow, and he has had visitors from Ulyanovsk, Russia. So therefore, you can see how the relationship between the federal system and the city of Oklahoma City works with Ulyanovsk. We've been very fortunate also in building relationships with the Institute for Economic Empowerment of Women, which is Dr. Teri Neese's program. And that program is involved with Afghanistan women and women from Kigali City, Rwanda. And they come to the United States, and fortunately, they have a week here in Oklahoma City where they meet with mentors. And Sister Cities is very pleased and very proud that we've been able to partner with Dr. Neese in hosting these women, providing them a venue to meet city officials, community leaders, and some of our corporate businesses. The second luncheon that we had was in November, and we have been trying to build a relationship with the Consular Corps, State of Oklahoma, because we feel that that's a good fit for the city to be able to be involved internationally throughout the state. And so we held this luncheon. Our keynote speaker was Governor George Nye, and he really tied together the relationships between the city and the state as far as global relationships. And so we honored the Consular Corps at that particular luncheon. And I have to tell you that although we have not increased our membership, what we have done is we've built that awareness, and our attendance at both of those events was well over 250 total, which is quite an improvement for the last three years. So we're very proud of those particular accomplishments. We also make ourselves available, whether it's through email, telephone calls, through the mayor's office, to deal with questions and situations from our city ambassadors, wherever they may be located. Some are in Houston. And I've received emails and correspondence with them. I do know that Taipei is planning on coming to Oklahoma City this next year in hopes of meeting with the city council and with the mayor. At this time, I think I'll stop, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and if I can't, I'll find you the answer.
All right, questions for Kathy?
Just really a comment. Kathy, thank you for your service. It's been a difficult task to resurrect an organization that's 30 years old that really didn't have a life. And you've done a fantastic job in recruiting Vicky to follow in your footsteps. It's a really neat program, and it is hard to kind of pinpoint exactly where to go, but I think we can see with the Kigali relationship and the Oklahoma Christian University's connection with Kigali, that there are lots of ways to, you know, blend these together and provide what at the end of the day is economic opportunity and cultural exchange between our two communities. And, you know, perhaps with the Olympics coming up in Rio, there may be some ways to work with that. I know we've actually talked a little bit about working with the Rotary Club and with Mike Knopp and maybe trying to pull together some kind of an event on the river that would involve teams from each of our sister cities and develop some cultural outreach, if you will, in that way. So I think there are lots of opportunities here. It's going to take a little -- it's going to take some hard work.
It is.
Thank you.
And our elections will be the end of this month, and Vicky Gorley will be elected President of Sister Cities for this next year.
That's a predetermined outcome.
Yes, it is.
All right. Any other questions for Kathy? All right, Kathy, thank you, and Vicky, thank you for helping us out on this important endeavor.
And thank you so much for the grant. We couldn't do it without you.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
Elsewhere from the city manager's office?
We have -- when we updated the council priorities last fall, council asked we do periodic updates on the progress on those priorities. So today, we're going to update on two of those. We're going to update on maintaining strong financial management and promoting thriving neighborhoods. And with that, we're going to start with Craig Freeman.
Thank you. As Jim said, we've got these progress indicators that tie to the council's five priorities that were established when we revisited these back in August last year. And one of the priorities was strong financial management, continuing strong financial management. And so there are three progress indicators that were identified with that, and those are maintaining our AAA bond rating. Currently, we have a AAA bond rating with Standard and Poor's and with Moody's. So maintaining that rating is an indicator of continued financial strength. The percentage of the general fund budget maintained and unbudgeted reserves is an indicator of our ability to respond to changes within the economy or increases in expenditures that were unexpected, like from natural disasters and things of that nature that help provide more stability for the city. And then the percent of citizens satisfied with the quality of city services. And I'll look at each one of those just real quickly. The maintaining the bond rating at a higher rate not only is an indicator of our financial strength and stability, but it also allows us lower borrowing costs, which in change, then also allows us to be able to put more money into projects, so we can have more money into infrastructure projects. And then it allows us also, as you've seen in the last couple of months, we've done projects where with the TIP-8 bonds, which were for the Project 180 projects, that we took that out long and did the bonds on those, we're able to use the city's AAA bond rating to back those bonds, to strengthen the rating on those bonds because the city can stand behind that. And so we can basically lend our credit to our city trusts that allow them to get better bond ratings. I mean, yeah, they get better bond ratings from that, and then allows them to be able to get lower borrowing costs and, again, put more money into projects. And so it's a benefit both to the city and to our city trusts that need assistance with their backing. We don't provide that backing on all the city trusts, for instance, the Water Utilities Trust has a AAA bond rating already, is very strong, and so we don't have to do that on all the trusts. But on those trusts that do need that, we've done that with golf bonds, we've done with COTB, also with the parking garage that's being constructed to the south of City Hall. Just a couple of statements that were taken from the rating reports that we get from Standard and Poor's and Moody's emphasizes how important our financial practices and our financial management are to the city's bond rating and to the strength of the city. And in this statement with the one from Standard and Poor's, they emphasize the fact that they see within our culture and within our elected officials and executive leaders, they see a continuing progress that they're confident that the strong financial management practices that we've exhibited over the last many years will continue into the future. And that's something that's very important as they look at our rating. Moody's has a similar statement, and if you'd like to, we can get any of these reports for you. Anytime we do bond ratings, we do a bond issue, we'll get ratings reports from Moody's and from Standard and Poor's. Some of the other factors that they indicate in both the reports are the fact that the city is the largest economy within Oklahoma is very important. We're an economic engine for the state of Oklahoma. We have strong financial reserves, and we'll talk about that as one of our measures that we're looking at. Have a history of voter support, both for infrastructure projects and for quality of life projects. They see that as really important as a stabilizer for the city that the citizens are willing to continue to invest in themselves and invest in the city. And then annual funding of the pension contribution. And I was just going to mention that one. Right now, our pension ordinance makes a commitment that we will continue to fund the annual required contribution rate, which helps us to either get back to 100% funding if we're below that or to maintain that. As you've seen in some documents that we've shown you recently, the pension position, our funding position, had fallen since 2007. I think we maxed it at -- I think we're at 108%. It was 2008, I think, actually, where we hit that. But in that timeframe over the last several years, during the -- because of the recession in 2008, we actually started seeing that begin to fall, and we spread our losses and gains over a four-year period. And so you can see the effects of really the recession from 2008, how that affected us going down to 87% funding position. And so what we did, the board, the Employee Retirement System Board, came back with the recommendation for the ordinance changes that you approved recently. They made some changes in their assumptions, the actuarial assumptions, but also asked to put a cap on our allowed COLAs, which lowered that to 2%. And as a result of that, by lowering the cap to 2%, where the maximum that we can provide for COLA, cost of living increase for the retirees is at 2%, then that increased our funding position to 96%. Now, we're still working -- that's based on the 2011 study. The actuary is working on the study from the financial, based on the financials from 2012, and that should be out in the next couple of months. But it strengthened our position, and that's something they saw as very positive, both that the board steps forward and that the council approves this change to strengthen our position and make this change within our pension system. And they see that as important for the city on an ongoing basis. Another challenge that we're facing that's similar to pension is the OPAB liability, and that's other post-employment benefits, which refers to our health insurance benefits that we provide for retirees. And we have made some adjustments in that in the past few years. It's still a very large unfunded liability that we have in that, and they're observing our progress as we're continuing to evaluate changes that we can make and actions we need to take to ensure that we're addressing that liability. So it's something important for us to focus on. We're working with an actuary right now to provide some analysis for us on some alternatives that we can bring back to the council to make additional changes to help address that liability. But it's something for us to keep in front of us to make sure that we have the long-term sustainability of the city's finances in our mind and our focus. Looking at the percentage of general fund budget maintained and unbudgeted reserves, we got up to 17.6, and this is the starting point for each of these fiscal years that you're looking at on that slide. Actually, the slide that we showed on the projection for where we're going to begin 2014 with unbudgeted reserves, based on the budget that you adopted this morning, actually with the sales tax check that we received in May and the June check just came in, that actually, we're thinking that's going to be a little bit lower than the 15%. If you remember, we changed a couple of years ago, we changed the target range for our reserves in the general fund. It was at 6% to 10%. We changed that to 8% to 15%. So this will drop us probably beginning of the year a little bit below 15%. We're thinking around 14.7%. We'll continue to monitor that and evaluate that. But still very strong reserves, and you can see the way the economy came back so strongly after we had used some reserves to help us weather the storm as we went through the recession in 2011. We dropped down to just below 10%, but we're able to come back very quickly as the economy rebounded quickly, and we were able to put those into reserves and not just push ahead and spend that money too quickly. And so it helped us restore reserves, still in a very strong position. The last progress indicator that we'll look at is the one on citizens' satisfaction with city services. And this one's a little bit unusual because we see it as a reflection, and this isn't the only reflection, but a reflection of financial strength because it shows our ability to be able to meet the desires of our citizens or the needed services for our citizens. At 66%, you would look at that and think, well, that's not a very strong rating. But when you compare that to other cities that are our size and larger, that we show that we're above the national-- that we're above the national average. And so when you make that comparison, we can still benchmark and see how we're changing. And you can see, we've seen it drop and increase a little bit, but it stayed fairly steady in the years that we've been doing this since 2007 and evaluating this in the citizen survey. The survey will be done again this year, and will give us an indication, again, as we look at our city services and our ability financially to be able to maintain those services for our citizens. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Craig, when do you go out to do that survey? Are we doing it?
I think we go out, is that, later this week, it gets mailed out.
Great.
All right. Pat?
Craig, have you ever quantified savings?
We looked at that recently, and if, I think if you look back to 2009, the estimate was we're saving about $1 million a year. If you look at the combination of the revenue bonds that are backed by the city and our AAA and our GEO bonds, that it's about $1 million a year in debt service just from 2009. So if you look back over the history, it's even greater than that.
It depends what you're comparing it to. Comparing it to the AA.
That's exactly right.
If you're comparing it to AA is one level. If you're comparing it to AA+, that's a different level of savings. So it really depends what you're comparing the AAA to.
Right. And that was a look at, when we evaluated that, was a look at if we just dropped down one notch, if we were one notch lower.
The reason I ask, there is usually a cost in maintaining AAA rating. And it's important that we make sure that we are receiving a benefit proportion of the cost that takes us to maintain it.
What's the cost?
Well, if you are, AAA means you're doing things really good, and your service levels are high, as this graph points out. We've got a revenue storm that we're extreme, that we are reasonably competent, will continue. I don't think it's going to, but there seems to be generally.
I've heard that before.
I'm the only one who feels that way. But I can take a lot of adversity before I change my mind. Anyway, there are some costs. I can't quantify them, but there are costs associated with that AAA.
Obviously, by maintaining a higher fund balance, that money could be used elsewhere. That would be one of those. But, you know, overall, I think most believe that, and we can quantify that the AAA is a benefit. Having AAA city, AAA Water Utilities Trust, AAA Environmental Assistance Trust is pretty strong.
I think it's a great, you know, a great aspect to demonstrate to our citizens that we're doing a good job. But I just want to make sure that we could also defend, if there are additional costs, the effort to.
Craig, could you also, could you look in to see what other municipalities in the state of Oklahoma have in a fund balance or a rainy day account, or however they might define it? Let's say the top five cities, Tulsa.
As far as top five in population?
Yes. Tulsa, Norman, Lawton, Broken Arrow.
Enid.
Enid.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
My comment, going to tag on Pat's, and that is, there is a, there is a cost in the rating, and holding the fund balance that high has a cost.
How's that a cost?
Well, because you're deferring things that you might, deferring things you might need to do, and inflation's going to raise the price of doing those things. So it's incremental, obviously, but I think it's part of the overall cost of being AAA rated. It's probably offset by the lower bond rating. But it is worthwhile, I think, to look at what the ROI is for maintaining a AAA rating and making sure that we don't, we're not killing ourselves with kindness in effect.
All right. We have an accountant here, we could ask him about cost.
Well, yeah, I was going to jump in.[824.01][824.01](Laughter). Don't want this opportunity to pass me by.[828.42][828.42](Laughter). But, you know, I would equate it to physical health. There's a cost in terms of exercising, watching what you eat, but it's all good. Having a, maintaining a conservative financial perspective for any municipality or any government, I don't see any downside to it. I only see upside to it. So, you know, you could say, well, if I lived a wilder life and didn't exercise and stayed out late, I might have more fun. But, you know, I think in the long run, you're much better off taking a more conservative financial approach to, you know, managing the activities of the city. I don't see any cost, any downside.
All right. Thanks, David. Larry?
Quick question, Craig. When you're talking about the analysis in the pension area, and you talked about the good move that you put forward by capping the COLA at 2%. Then you also mentioned there's a study going on as what we might do with retirement as we move forward?
Yes.
That study will look at the possibility, or the potential advantages of going from a defined, a benefit to a defined contribution type of approach?
At this point, what the study that I was referring to is we're working with an actuary on looking at our costs on retiree health benefits and what commitments we've made right now in being able to address that. We don't have a formal study going on right now in looking at defined benefit versus defined contribution. We could definitely look at that with the direction of the council, but we don't have anything active on that right now.
I think that's something that you should look at. The COLA deal is, to me, is putting a Band-Aid over it because you're capping there. But for long-term sustainability, that'd be my advice.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Any other questions on this?
I agree with Larry on the study of defined contribution versus defined benefit. We are unique, not unique, but almost unique, maintaining a defined benefit program this day and age.
Defined contribution.
Pardon me?
Defined benefits, you're right. Correct.
I make mistakes all the time, so don't bother. Just jump in and correct me in comment. But I think it's, the time has come for us to do this because, you know, even they're suggesting at the state level as well, the solution, some of the budgetary problems that are running into do with pension.
Okay. And the second part of this is Russell and Bob Teener to talk about our neighborhoods.
I'm going to begin by arguing that everything we do in the planning department is directed at promoting thriving neighborhoods, whether it's direct. And a lot of the work that we do in the planning department is directly oriented towards supporting neighborhoods, whether we do that in the planning phase in trying to create neighborhoods that we believe that will be sustainable over the long term, or whether we're going back into the old neighborhoods and trying to revitalize those and bring those back. But everything that we do essentially is directed at promoting thriving neighborhoods. I think it's important, and this map that you have before you, it's important to recognize what the magnitude of the issue is so that we can be realistic about how much we can accomplish. If you, I'm not going to read that legend, but to identify those areas that we're struggling with in poverty are those areas that, the redder they are, the worse they are. So you're getting up to as much as 86% poverty in the reddest areas there. And the yellow would be about 15% poverty. So these are trends that we are working towards changing. Our economy is improving, so we hope that this number can change over time. But we're still about 17% poverty. That's been fairly resilient over time, and it's difficult to deal with because the reality is, if you're poor, no matter what you may want to do, it's difficult for you to maintain your homes. And I think that's a part of the struggle that we're dealing with, at least in the older neighborhoods. We have about 600,000 people living in the city, and about 100,000 of those are living below that federal poverty threshold. So that's a significant challenge in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. Another way to look at that is by income. And you can see a similar pattern here. And another statistic in support of just the magnitude of this, we have about 260,000 units of housing in the city, and about a third of those are valued at under $50 a square foot. So when your home is valued at under $50 a square foot, it indicates that there's a difficulty in trying to keep your house up to perhaps the standard that you may want to have. And about 25% of all Oklahoma City households are paying 30% or more of their household income on their mortgage and other home-related expenses. 30% is the indicator that the federal government uses to indicate whether you're working well financially or working well within your means. We have several different things that we do from the federal side, and you've heard me talk about the different federal programs that we operate, down payment assistance. We provide 15% of the money that we get through the Community Development Block Grant to community housing development organizations or CHODOs. We have the Home Program, Housing Rehab, and the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Those are all programs where we're directly involved in the neighborhoods, either rehabbing or constructing new houses or supporting our sub recipients in their construction of housing. But our goal here is to promote homeownership. Homeownership is one of those strongest indicators of the quality of a neighborhood, so we're trying to increase that. We do more than 100 different, 100 down payment assistance loans every year, grants every year. And the goal there is to, you know, to enhance the amount of people that we have who are in owner-occupied housing. Other programs that we have introduced over the last few years or that we've been working on, vacant and abandoned building program, which I've talked to you about in the past, and I'm going to go through each one of these in more detail. Strong Neighborhood Initiative, Commercial District Revitalization, the Comprehensive Plan, and then Downtown Revitalization. Beginning with the Vacant and Abandoned Building Program, we have over 12,000 houses, or 12,000 buildings, I should say, in the city that are vacant and abandoned, and more than 50% of those have been vacant for more than two years. Those vacant buildings are one of the strongest indicators of difficulties in a neighborhood. So we, as we move forward with the development of this program, we believe as we can, as we can begin to make inroads on that, the number of structures, that's going to begin to signal a change in the health of those particular neighborhoods. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which were the federal grants that were provided to us to deal with the home foreclosure crisis several years ago, we have now rehabilitated and sold 51 homes. We've got others that are on the waiting list to be sold. But you can see there the change in terms of the initial value there. These homes were an average of $45,000. When we acquired them, they're now worth $78,000. So when you rehabilitate a vacant home and it appraises at that much higher in the neighborhood, then that's enhancing the value of the neighborhood. And overall, the NSP program, the 32% of money that, well, in terms of the overall impact there, we've generated an impact of more than $50 million. The NSP funds at about $18 million have been able to leverage almost twice as much in private investment. Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, this is another indicator of just how difficult this is going to be. We chose three neighborhoods because we've been dispersing our allocation of federal funds over the years into a much broader area because there are a lot of areas, as you saw from those two maps, that are eligible for support through the federal programs. We decided to target these particular neighborhoods. We've had success in the past with Persejo, Jeff Park, Mester Park. Those have all improved over time. We're trying to repeat that with these neighborhoods. But you can see the challenges that we're up against here. If you're looking at Class and Tin Pin, 7% of the homes there are vacant, but you have 121 vacant lots in that neighborhood. So each of these particular neighborhoods is going to take time to turn around. And Culbertson's Highland is even more challenging, 179 homes and 134 vacant lots. So you've almost got as many vacant lots as you've got homes. It's been in that condition for a long period of time. I don't want to see it stay that way forever, but it is going to take time to turn it around. We're going to be in these neighborhoods for five years or more, and this is just three of the neighborhoods out of dozens that are in a similar condition. So we've got a lot to deal with. One of the success stories that we've had in recent time is housing in the downtown area. And that translates to a different impression of who we are as a community and how successful we are becoming. So even though this is a relatively small number of housing units in the downtown area, it has a much greater impact in terms of that impression of how Oklahoma City is doing. So we're currently about just under 2,000 home units that we've constructed since the beginning of this recording period in 2000. We have another 600 that are under construction right now, and another 1,200 that we know of that are planned for construction. And you heard about the NSP project this morning, the Bricktown project where we're trying to include affordable housing units in that project. And as much as we can, we're also negotiating, I've been talking with the Alliance for Economic Development about using the TIP to target more affordable housing as well. We realize that's going to be a very difficult challenge to do. This is probably a better time to do it than now than later because as downtown continues to improve, property values are going to rise, and it's going to be harder and harder to be able to afford those units, which is why we're also looking at those inner ring of neighborhoods because even if you can't afford to live downtown, housing in that inner ring is still relatively affordable. So you still get the amenities of downtown, you just have to be able to go down here. But that's the way most communities are really dealing with this, is you can only do so much in the downtown area because of the cost of land, but that inner ring of suburbs is where people can still afford to live and get those amenities. Commercial District Revitalization Program, and I think this statement here out of a recent study by American Express really says it all, why we're focusing on commercial districts. Commercial districts are integrally linked with residential neighborhoods. And we didn't have this information before. We knew it anecdotally, but it was really nice to have this particular statistic here, that houses that are in areas where we're putting attention, and we have photos here of the Plaza District, are on average 50% more gain in home values than the citywide market overall. So that's a significant gain. So while we're working on both, but in those areas where we were just working on the commercial district, we're still going to see a substantial improvement in the residential neighborhood around that. And these are the districts that we've been working with over the years. The Bottom Line, Oklahoma City, that is the average of appreciation in commercial property value between 2005 and 2011. And you can see all those districts above that, the six districts above that, the ones that we've been working in for quite a while, those have all improved well above the city average. Plaza District, of course, have gone way over the top. There are 250% improvement. But Asian District, Midtown, Persejo, Uptown 23rd, where we're just beginning to focus more attention, Stockyards, have all improved dramatically. And the other ones, while they're not at that same standard, Invision 240, Friends of Northwest 10th, Windsor area, those are the ones we're just beginning to work with. Capitol Hill, I would argue, was so far behind to begin with that that improvement there is nevertheless still a very positive trend. And I wanted to, I think one of the other important returns on our investment with these commercial districts is the amount of activity that they're creating, all the different festivals that they're holding. That is also supportive of the neighborhoods around there, makes them more attractive, and enhances the quality of life of the community as a whole. And they are seeing significant improvement in attendance at a lot of the events that they are having. And if I can just quote a couple, Stockyards is the annual run with the Bulls, which I have not participated in. Had 100 participants in 2009, now has about 1,200. So they had a 300% increase. One that's probably closer to my ability is the Annual Winds of the West. Had 2009, had 300 participants, is well over 500 now. And I can quote a lot of others there, but there's a significant improvement over time in the amenities that these particular activities are creating. And then the largest thing that we're working on in the planning department is the Comprehensive Plan. And that sets the framework for everything that we do, the way we grow as a city. There's been a lot of engagement with members of the community, and the Comprehensive Plan is really a way to empower citizens to tell us what is important to them. And what we are hearing over and over and over again is that they want to see their neighborhoods supported and revitalized. And to do that is going to take a lot of effort going forward. And I'm grateful for partners like, I noticed Georgie is here today, but we have other partners like Neighborhood Housing Services, et cetera. Those public-private partnerships that we continue to work to establish are really important for us going forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Russell? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Russell, you know, on page 20 where it shows the Strong Neighborhood Initiative, Class and Tin Pin, Class and North Highland, and Culbertson, those were the three that were selected recently.
Correct. Yes.
Were they selected because they had the highest potential for improvement? Or were they, did they have the highest, for example, vacancy rate or number of vacancies?
No, we really looked at them for what we thought would be the easy No, we really looked at them for what we thought would be the easiest ones to turn around. We wanted to go with two. Councilman Kelly at the time pushed for Culberson, East Highland. That one is going to be the more challenging one to turn around. But we've got a lot of support in that neighborhood. There's a lot of neighborhood, neighbor activity there. So it's just going to take a lot longer, because you can see those statistics, there's a lot to turn around. We've got a lot of vacant lots. And the condition of the houses is going to take some time to fix up as well.
So, but we still probably have other neighborhoods that are just as depressed, if that's the term.
Yes. When we looked at it, we chose 34 neighborhoods on base criteria, and then narrowed that down to, I think, seven at the time we took the Neighborhood Conservation Committee. And then we finally chose these three to work on. But those ones that weren't selected as part of the seven are still just as eligible, and we would like to work on them, just don't have the capacity to do that. But the intent is that we turn these neighborhoods around, that it builds up the enthusiasm in the other neighborhoods that are not part of the program now. They participate in the future, they get themselves organized, and then that makes it easier for us to work with those neighborhoods going forward. And we just keep churning and churning, and turning each one of these, getting past the tipping point so that each is sustainable, and that, you know, then we can withdraw and focus our effort elsewhere.
Right. And I think this slide on number 23 that shows the increase in value, for example, for those such as Invision 240, which is really still kind of in its infancy, it gives a lot of encouragement to those property owners. If they approach it correctly, they could see possibly, you know, a doubling in value of their property within a relatively short period of time.
That's a very good point, and that's why we put that chart in here to just indicate that if you participate, you do the hard work, then you'll get the reward from that. And the Plaza District is obviously the shining example. Invision 240, I think that, because that's the lowest number there, really indicates that they're falling behind the rest of the city in terms of commercial property valuation, and that we need to put some attention.
Now, quick, in regards to East Highland, the majority of those vacant lots are owned by Urban Renewal, correct?
I think a lot of them are, yes.
And so it, in my view, it makes it easier to do development for its residential homes in that area, because Urban Renewal owns so much of that land. Now, when we look at North Highland Park, a good chunk of the vacant land there is owned by the county, correct?
There are a lot of county lots in there. I don't know the exact numbers. I mean, that was one of the factors we looked at, was the ease of being able to secure the property to redevelop it. So that was one of the positive factors in each of those neighborhoods.
Ed?
Can you go back to the increase in value? While we're looking, you said 30% of Oklahoma City citizens are, Oklahoma City citizens are spending an average of 30% on their mortgage, or?
Yeah, a quarter, quarter of citizens are spending 30% or more of their income on their mortgage and other associated costs with that, so.
Do you know what percent are on transportation?
I do not know that number.
Okay. So can you go to that increase in value with the different neighborhoods? So you were at the same meeting in Salt Lake City, and you've addressed, you would have heard the same things about gentrification on downtown development. I think you would have, it's, well, it's, no, it's the graph with the 10 different business improvement districts.
Oh, okay.
23. Yeah, right there. So there also seemed to be a theme about that the slums of the future are going to be in the suburbs. I mean, that you're, as you have this, these peripheral expansion growth patterns, with cities investing a lot of taxpayer subsidies downtown, and then you've got the development at the periphery, the neighborhoods in between the downtown and the periphery are oftentimes getting left behind. And it seems like this is the framework or the pathway, that you can't retrofit the whole city, you can't invest in the whole city, but you could have nodes
Correct.
of capital. Where we invest, we spread it around, and at the placemaking conference in Norman, they talked about the power of 10, trying to, and it would seem to be that's what we're doing, because it seems to be about 10. But maybe you can expand that to another 10, and have different nodes through the neighborhoods of commercial activity, and then try and, is that, do you think there's utility in that approach?
Yeah, I agree completely. Federal funds, to a large degree, drive us to the poorest neighborhoods. I do have concerns about a lot of those, that next ring of suburbs, that were built in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, maybe 50s and 60s. I think some of those, the housing construction wasn't as high quality. A lot of those were built without sidewalks, as we've talked about earlier. There are different factors at play. I'd say two of the, the main ones are that you've got a turnover in the occupancy as people age out of those areas, you get a more eclectic reoccupation of the housing, and then the quality of the schools. I think the schools, more than anything, has been the determinant for the success of those neighborhoods. So that's why I put a lot of emphasis on working with the school district as well, and ensuring that we can maintain and improve the quality of schools in that area and the inner city.
And the vacant and abandoned studies can be presented next week?
I'm not sure of it. I think it's on July the 2nd, I think we're presenting.
Okay.
Any other questions for Russell?
Bob's got a couple of quick slides.
Okay.
Excuse me, my presentation will be pretty brief. I just want to remind you that our department does interact with neighborhoods every day, all four sections. Basically, animal welfare, we coordinate with over 160 organizations for placement of our pets at the shelter. We were, we participate in Oklahoma Roundtable for Animal Welfare. Basically, we identify best practices, the way to deal with our animal shelter, or shelter animals. We do adoption events. We did one, Midnight Wolfness, a couple of years ago, where we participated with several of our partners. We went to PetSmart and did a 48-hour adoption program. We set a record for the number of adoptions that were done in a 48-hour period. And all these events, they tie back to neighborhoods, because the people that we're dealing with promote neighborhoods, and our actions in those neighborhoods improve the quality of life. Additionally, our Community Spade and Neuter Program that the council adopted, the half, half of our adoption fee goes to that program. We did over five, almost 5,000 additional spade and neuters for residents of Oklahoma City at no cost. And as I stated in my budget presentation, our intake number is down about 14%. The long-term goal at the shelter is to reach 75% live exit. The number, the total, if, the more we can reduce our intake, the better, closer we get to that number. Code enforcement, we do neighborhood meetings, we attend neighborhood meetings once a month. We're available anytime a councilman or a neighborhood would like to have someone represent there at a neighborhood meeting to talk about it. We attend town hall meetings, we coordinate with Neighborhood Alliance, we have participants in those programs to help the neighborhoods. We also have 28 proactive neighborhoods. Our inspectors do one inspection a month, where they just drive through their designated neighborhood, and they try to identify code violations. And the advantage to that is that they're familiar with the neighborhood, they're able to see, identify problems that may be evolving, and they can go to those neighbors, those property owners, and make contact directly. And it seems to be working. Our volunteer, the volunteering to, when they do the, when they resolve the violation voluntarily, that gets the violation resolved quicker than if we have to go through a contract program. Additionally, the Development Center, a couple of things that we've done there, we were involved in a Public Safety Month. Basically, we worked, we partnered with Ace Hardware. We had our chiefs there three months in May, where they talked to people about building permits and the requirements, water heater, safety, those types of things. In October, we're going to partner with the Home Depot, and we'll have our chiefs sitting out, set up at a table outside the Home Depot, and as people come in, we'll talk to them about the requirements for building permits, and, you know, what they need to do. Additionally, the Development Center, we've been, they've been involved in the Residential Outreach Center in the Storm area. We've had somebody there every day, where they meet with those citizens that need help on demolition permits, and just trying to find out what permits they need to rebuild. So we've been involved in the neighborhoods there. The subdivision zoning, basically, they interact with, anytime we have a zoning case or a platting case where neighborhoods are going to be impacted, that staff can meet with those neighbors, will attend public hearings. A couple of examples, the OU Health Science PD, we attended three or four meetings there. We had an apartment complex that Councilman Greenwell was involved in, that we had representatives there. So that gives us an opportunity to meet with the neighborhoods and promote, you know, the thriving neighborhoods. Then I have a couple of slides. This slide is a percent of code enforcement violations resolved voluntarily. I think the key here is that line, the dark line in the middle, it shows that from 2007, our percentages have been going up of voluntary resolution on our complaints. Actually, our goal for last year was 70%. For 2014, we're raising it to 75%, and we're actually at 81% right now voluntary resolution of those complaints. And like I said earlier, the key there, if we can get the property owner to resolve that violation, then we don't have to go through the contract process and, you know, even citations. And this last slide, this is our live exit numbers.
On this slide you just talked about, why is it so erratic?
The, the, this slide's by months, and when we give someone a citation, sometimes we'll give them a citation that extends over months. So we have a couple there that exceed 100%. That's because they had 30 days to reconcile. Probably if I had to do it again, I would have probably grouped it a little better. Kind of looks like my EKG. But, so, basically, it's reflecting by the month, but we go with the average. Our average over the month is 81% over the first three quarters of this month. The next one's a little bit like that, too, our live exit rates. And this is a little easier to explain, because with animal welfare, there are times in the spring and the fall where we get more, we get more animals. And so those numbers go up and down. But, I mean, this is clearly a good example. In 2007, we were at 35% live exit rate, and now we're at 65%, and we're heading for 75%. So the programs that you've approved and supported have clearly worked in this area. And, you know, the more live exit rates, as that improves, that improves the quality of life in the neighborhoods, and helps us run our shelter more efficiently. So. Anybody has a question?
Okay. Any other questions for Bob on this issue? All right, Bob, thanks for your work. We're thrilled to see the improvement.
That's it, sir.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have a few.
Mr. Mayor, citizens of the council, members of the council, excuse me. I'm John Swinford. My address is 1041 Northwest Grand Boulevard. I represent MJH Properties, which is an owner of property in this particular area we're going to be talking about. The area that we're talking about is South 23rd and Shields. What has happened is that Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad has closed the street going over their track, which is just to the east. This, for me, started in 2007, when the Santa Fe Railroad wanted to close this very same street, 23rd Street, and brought, preceding CE 705, we had hearing before the Planning Commission, and the, showed the commission that the closure of this particular street hampered all the properties on the east side of Shields, a rather old neighborhood, not the least of which was that the only access to the industrial park there was to back up all the way to Central Avenue, which is Lincoln. And then trucks drive through the neighborhood. The neighborhood, as I said, is an older neighborhood, has trees growing on either side of the street, and they've been growing for such a long time that they're now overhanging the street. Trucks that would drive through there would just have to knock down the trees. What has happened recently is that Santa Fe has simply closed off 23rd Street, and we have tried to get an explanation of this. We've actually talked with Santa Fe, and those people who talked to us tell us they're talking off the record. We have tried to ascertain whether any applications were made, and we believe there were none with engineering, and nothing with planning. And we have asked of the city clerk's office what might be learned, and we were told that they would certainly look into it, and the indications are that there isn't any indication here in the city as to why this street was closed. Now, the old case, CE 705, resulted in the fact that the city simply said, "You're not going to close this particular street." But right now, the indications are that the street is closed, and it's not being open very fast. I don't pretend to speak for Santa Fe or--
Bring up our Public Works Director, because I have some questions that you're asking, you're causing me to ask myself, and I'd rather ask Eric. Eric, what do you, what can you tell us about this? Why is the street closed, if it's closed?
So Burlington Northern, for a number of years, has recognized that 23rd Street at this location is a, is a intersection and a track crossing that's extremely problematic. They've had a lot of vehicle damages reported. We have requested on a number of occasions, from the city's perspective, to have that track maintained and maintenance. And so recently, they've actually undergone that. They've actually done some significant track maintenance improvements through downtown. Actually, I've seen them as far south as Norman, where they're actually replacing ties and doing some significant improvements. We welcome those, obviously, but the crossing today is currently temporary closed. It's got type III barricades, which are the portable type barricades that have the orange bars on them to keep traffic from crossing. We do not have any applications in from Burlington Northern to completely close that. There is some future discussions about the Oklahoma City Quiet Zone, where 23rd Street may be included as a part of, but until that process actually begins, and the road is officially requested to be closed, and hearings are then reinstated, there is no currently approved planned closure of 23rd Street. At this moment, it's just maintenance, track maintenance that's very much overdue.
Who closes the street? Is that us, or is that them?
The city will start a process, obviously, through the quiet zone.
And even, even the temporary aspect is during their construction?
Temporary aspect, Burlington Northern needs to protect the tracks and do the closures as necessary for track maintenance. And so in most cases, they will typically coordinate that with the city. I would need to research and see if they've pulled the necessary permits for the temporary closures, if we're talking about construction.
Yeah.
Permanent closures obviously go through a Planning Commission process, which we see several of those on the agenda each week.
Which is not taking place. Can you look into this and make sure that this, temporary is what I'm going to call it today, is not extended any longer than it needs to be?
I will, and until a formal application comes through, that's exactly how we'll treat this.
And I'm sure you don't have enough information to say definitively, but in general, there is talk about creating a quiet zone, which might affect that intersection. Do you have any input as far as whether or not you would welcome a quiet zone on behalf of the property owner, or not?
A quiet zone, in the sense of closing this street, would be detrimental to a great number of people. I-- I, I can only say to you that not only my client, but 32 other citizens protested on, on that particular street. It, it creates a very difficult problem in terms of access, as I tried to indicate.
All right, well, Quiet Zones involve, I mean, it's to the benefit of the property owners if we're going to do it. If it's not to the benefit of the property owners, then we wouldn't want to do it. Meg, you've done some research.
If I could, John, John, I've driven those intersections a lot and as you go south on Shields, 23rd Street has two entrances essentially. It, it comes in from two different directions. You can turn into the neighborhood and come back out of the neighborhood at two different places. There's also an intersection at 25th Street and there's an intersection at 27th Street and there's a crossing at 29th Street and there's a crossing at Grand and there's a crossing at 44th. So access into those neighborhoods is not limited.
I, I'm going to tell you that I'm, I'm going to differ with you. I'm, I'm going to tell you that in this, insofar as this particular industrial park is concerned, that it is most difficult. And I simply say to you that i, i, if you would look at that neighborhood in terms of what street would you go, would you take a truck, for instance, and drive to that industrial park on, you would be, you would be hampered. That industrial park sits on Santa Fe Street, I believe. And there is no access, direct access from 25th, you see? And you can't come up from the south on 25th and you cannot come in without obstructing tree life from Central Avenue. Now, I--
I, I don't understand why--
I don't pretend to be an expert and, and, and I would, I would say everybody, if they, if they're really serious about this Quiet Zone and, and the Quiet Zone was addressed in the 2007 hearings that I'm talking about. But if, if it needs to be readdressed and reassessed, certainly nobody is going to say that, I'm not going to say I'm the last word on that, but I--
Well, it will be and I'm, and I'm trying to get ahead of the game here by bringing this up. This is not a Quiet Zone issue today, but I thought while you're here, if you had a, you know, a short opinion that we could hear, it might, it might help, help us as we go through that process.
Yeah, I, I just, I think for clarity and I don't, Eric is still here, it's my understanding that when we, when the Quiet Zone was initially discussed, it really only went to Sixth Street, but that the Burlington Railroad came back to us and asked us if we'd be amenable to closing 23rd Street, which is one of the reasons that they were going to contribute more dollars to this Quiet Zone.
But I was under the impression that we had considerable property owners, or at least people that lived in the neighborhood, who had long complained about the noise of the tracks. Is that true? Okay. So, I mean, it wasn't just prompted by the railroad. It's, it's been a longstanding problem. That's what's been related to us. And so I don't want you to think that, that that decision's been made or even really discussed in detail, but it is something that, that's kind of on our, our plate right now and something we're looking at.
Our, our immediate concern is that certainly Santa Fe Railroad, if they had an emergency, needs to jump in and take charge to safeguard their track. But we don't see that as happening. What we have is at best a, a temporary repair item.
Yeah. Yeah, you're more on point than me, so, so, right. Today, we're looking at temporary repair and I've asked Eric to kind of look at it and make sure that we're trying to get it, that temporary aspect of it relieved as soon as possible so you can get back to business, to the extent that it's been impaired by the temporary shutdown. Okay? All right.
We certainly appreciate--
Okay. But Eric, I know railroads have a lot of authority in the United States in general. They can't shut down a road if it's a city street, right?
You know, I would say in a case of an emergency, they probably could, but they'd need to contact us and--
Okay, so there's process and that they'll be a part of. All right, I just want to make sure that, that we had legal bounds and it sounds like we do. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have others that have signed up to speak. Jim Hunter?
Thank you, sir. I'm Jim Hunter. I'm at 514 Southwest 25th Street. We wanted to address a problem and maybe this isn't the right forum, but we've been visiting with the city engineers about a flooding problem that we have on 25th Street. I've worked in the neighborhood, it'll be 33 years next month, so I've seen it evolve over time and, and it's been a chronic issue with flooding. And over the years, we've asked the city to come out and they've sent an engineer out and said, "Well, that drain should be big enough, it shouldn't be flooded." Or another time, they come back and they say, "Well, okay, you might be having a flooding problem, but we don't have any money today." And so--
Do you have any pictures?
We do have pictures.
Great.
Alfonso brought some.
Perfect. Talking about flooding, it kind of helps to see it.
I understand.
Because somebody's puddle is another person's flood.
The, these pictures were from May 20th and of course, that wasn't the most severe, but it's more typical of what we see. May 31st, we had, you know, five inches of water in our front office.
Yeah, and how long did it take to, to subside?
Dissipated right away.
Okay.
So I believe that the pipe's probably big enough, it's just that there's not enough gray area to get the water into the pipe.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, May 31st is a good example--
It was crazy.
Because the whole city flooded on May 31st.
Right, right, right.
And I don't think we can build a city that's going to withstand that.
That was the exception and we can understand a 20-year flood zone and we're in it. I get that.
Right, okay.
But the, the more important is that it floods there regularly and, and that we get water under the door several times a year. And it's been worse in the last few years and I don't know whether I could attribute that to the city paving the corner at 25th and Walker, the northeast corner where they put in the DHS office. It used to be a lot of grass and stuff there and now it's all cement. So we've got more runoff from various construction projects.
So these pictures are from the May 20th storm?
Right, and that's water receding because of course, when it was raining hard, Alfonso didn't want to go outside and take pictures when it was high. But his office gets flooded every time it rains.
So you like drought, is what you like?
Well, no, I don't because I like green, but, um, anyway, we would like somebody on council to address, maybe put us a little higher on the priority list to look at it again. I did contact Eric Weiner at the, one of the city engineers.
That's him?
Yep, I got a nice email back saying, "Thanks, we'll put you on the list," but I was under the impression that we were on the list because we petitioned several times to that office and nothing's happened.
Okay. Well, Eric, where is this on the list of priorities?
So, so we do actually have the project on the list, but we're going to relook at the project. The intent of the email is to relook to see if there were some short-term solutions that hopefully we could come up with. There is a larger project that would most likely be required at 25th and Walker. It's one that we may have to look forward into maybe a possible future bond issue for, but I think there are some short-term solutions and we'd like to come up with those and we'll get back with you on them as soon as possible.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And if I may address 23rd Street just for a minute?
Sure.
That street should be open because the fire department addresses that neighborhood and there's a new fire department right there. So if they have to go down to 25th, they have to go back and weave through the neighborhood to try and get up there. Santa Fe does not go through, it's closed because of the angle of the railroad track.
Okay.
So for emergency response, it's probably better to be open. And then, of course, the big truck issue, trying to get trucks through neighborhoods when kids playing on the streets and if they're getting in from off of Shields, it's a lot safer for the neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thanks for the input, Jim.
You bet, thanks.
Uh-huh. Alfonso?
Hi, my name is Alfonso Macias and my office is located in 509 Southwest 25th, Oklahoma City. And Jim Hunter and I, we are neighbors and of course, we also have other neighbors that in, within the last two weeks, we actually suffered big material damages, as you can see some of those pictures. The water went all the way to the back of my building and, well, that's a lot of destruction, but this is happening about, about two times a year. I didn't, I do not have pictures for every two times a year, but I have records in my agenda where when I get those biggest storms and the water get to the curb, pass the curb and get to the front door of my office, there's nothing that I can do. I called several times, I have records of that, called the Oklahoma City Government and back to when they made that investment in the Capitol Hill area, I was attending some of those meetings and somebody says, "Are they going to do some remedy with that small drainage that is on the west side of Walker on 25th?" And the city, one of the city engineers stand up and he says, "Yes, we will take care of that." So it was very enthusiastic to become part of that redevelopment of Capitol Hill. When they finished with the project, I noticed that they didn't do anything because we've been neglected. And so I asked and they say, "We run out of money." Well, I keep on calling and they say, "Give me some pictures." I took some pictures and then they, they say, "We don't have any money, we don't have any budget for that, we need help. We're really done."
Well, you're doing the right thing and drawing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay, and the pictures really helped, so thank you. Hieronimo Martinez?
Wanted to show you some stuff with the computer, but I didn't have to have a PDF file. Call in to say you could hook up your computer to show some, some stuff that I wanted to show you.
Well, feel free to email it to the council individually if you'd like.
Um, I was just, want to give you this first. Where I begin?
And Hieronimo, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Oh, sure. My name is Hieronimo Martinez and I live at 3311 Southwest 17th Street. This is my first time coming to the city council, so I'm like, "Ugh, I don't know what to do." Okay, um, I was going to show on the computer that Oklahoma provides down payment assistance for only certain areas of Oklahoma, not the whole state. I went to hud.gov and I guess it trickles down to the state and the state divides it up to, uh, different agencies. So anyways, the reason why I'm here is in hope that you guys would review, revise or change or modify the areas where the state offers the first-time home buyers program. So there's different programs, Community Action, Oklahoma City and the Neighborhood The area that I want to have the house built is on 44th and 59th. It's, uh, it's in the Oklahoma District, but you guys target certain areas. And I would like if you guys would like to expand it or provide some type of help. Now, the OHAF said that they would help out, but I have to get their loan. Community Action helps out, but since it's not in that area, that's just, that's not listed on that, they can't, they can't help me.
Are you trying to buy a home?
Yes, purchase a house. That's what I'm trying to do.
And you want to buy in this neighborhood and it's, I'm just trying to understand where you're--
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to buy a house, but they don't offer a first-time home, it's a federal fund.
Right, I, I just couldn't tell if you, if you were selling property or buying property.
No, no, I am trying to buy a prop--
Which direction you were coming--
Actually, I'm trying to buy a house through Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
And they, I'm, I'm approved. I got approved for a house, I've been working my secret hours and all that.
Congratulations.
The problem is that they don't offer it. The, I don't know, but HUD offers it to the, to the state. The state trickles it down to agencies like Community Action, Neighborhood Housing and then, of course, the Oklahoma, which depending how much you make and you could get approved.
We can bring, Russell, can you, can you give me some information on this?
I'd like to see if you could address, help me out.
Yeah, well, let's, let's get some information because you may know more about this than I do. Russell, exactly how does the process work about determining--
Well, I think the area that Mr. Martinez is talking about is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area, which is where we, we are required to identify that area through the Department of Housing and Urban Development and ours is the largest in the country at 50 square miles. So we have a large eligible area in which to acquire a property with the assistance, the Down Payment Assistance Program, which provides $6,000 if you're, if you're buying, building a home in that area, $3,500 if you're outside of that area but still in an eligible census tract. So that's the way the, the program works. I'd be happy to talk to Mr. Martinez in terms of where his property lies relative to the NERSA, but it would be a difficult process to amend. We've had the same district for a long period of time and I know that the community changes, but as, as I illustrated on those maps earlier, we've got a lot of the city that is, is struggling and is therefore eligible, but there's only so much that HUD is willing to provide and support.
Yeah.
Well, I have--
If it's by census tract, is, that's by, I assume by income, right?
Correct, it's based on income, so it's more than 20%.
But you're saying it's a defined line that doesn't move. It was at one time based on a census tract, but it's not fluid. It's not based on, on the current census tract, it's based on some previous census tract?
Well, those census tracts are all still eligible, the, the ones that are defined within the NERSA. I mean, it is, it is possible to change it, but we, we may have to take out some other area. That would be a negotiation with HUD, I'm not exactly sure how they would relate to that.
Do you, do you know that this is not or, or is or is not in--
Well, I, I don't know the exact boundaries, but I'm going to go with what Mr. Martinez is saying.
I, I did print out a worksheet, I could give you guys the organizations and that offer first-time homeowner assistance. I could print out more and give you guys some of that, but the, the one that Award Five is watching, that, the ADA program, that's the only one I could find through the state. That's the only one that, that offers, but it's not a down payment assistance, it's actually a matching fund. You give $1, they give $1. There's your down payment or if you want to start a business or if you want to go to high school, I mean, I mean, college, but that's the only thing I found because I, I even called the city and the city said it's under new projects, but I just talked to this gentleman that was talking a minute ago and he said there's a planning department that deals with that.
Okay.
But the city has to approve it to expand the area.
So you're, you're wanting to move, is that right?
I want to live in that area where Habitat offering--
Because you're in the, you're, based on the address you gave me, you're in the area now, it appears, to me just looking at the map.
Yes.
Okay. But you're wanting to move out of the area, but that's an area that's not in the, in, in that, that, that place.
Yeah, it is, the area that I want to move in, that's on 44th, 59th County Line Road. County Line Road divides from Mustang to Oklahoma City.
Yeah, well, that's way west.
Yeah. Well, that's the new development that Habitat--
I see. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see this, I don't see you getting part of this program way out of County Line.
Uh, County Line Road is the dividing line from Mustang.
Oh, I know where it is. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is, this is more of an, of an urban program and I would, I just don't see it--
I did call the rural, Oklahoma Rural and Development, but they said it has to go by your county. The county has to provide that fundings and I called HUD.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to advise you, I don't see the property area being extended that far over. I thought you were trying to tweak it from maybe, you know, Tulsa to Meridian or something like that, but--
And Meridian is as far as out you guys go?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, but County Line Road's a long ways from Meridian.
Yeah.
So, I'm just not trying to give you any hope that you're going to get accomplished what you're asking for here today.
Okay.
Okay?
So in other words, if HUD overset, the state won't offer it because it's out of their, the area?
What Russell's telling us is that the, there is a defined area, it's, it's, it's to encourage urban revitalization and it's really difficult for us to change the boundaries at all, much less change it--
Oh, to change the boundaries is difficult.
Yeah, change it from the area you're, that it currently is to the area that you're asking about.
But he said there is some fundings available, right? If you're out of this area?
Um, it's still got to be in an eligible census tract, so we would have to do some research on that. So I would suggest that we talk after the meeting.
I did went to the census actually and it does say that it has expanded. I was, see, I was going to bring the computer and show you guys, but I don't, I couldn't get it.
All right, well, I think Russell's got a good idea. Why don't you visit with him?
Okay.
He has, he has a lot of information, sounds like you could benefit from.
All right.
All right? Thanks for coming down, though.
No, thank you.
Anybody else here wishing to speak to the council? Yes, come on up.
Sorry, Mayor, I signed up, I knew it was going to be legally, didn't know if I could make it to the end.
We appreciate your patience.
John George, President of Oklahoma City Fraternal Order of Police. I'm not going to keep you long, I just really want to thank the mayor, the manager and the council for affording our members the 10 paid days of leave or the five days. It was very appreciative, very relieved a lot of our members' stress, so I want to thank you on behalf of the FOP members and the rest of city employees for doing that for them during the tornadoes. Thank you.
We have a lot of city employees that live in that part of the city, so we assume that a lot were--
We had 12 officers, I don't know how many city employees total, but it was very much appreciative and I just wanted to thank you personally.
The city manager was right on top of that right from the beginning, so the praise goes to him through us, but we appreciate it.
We thank everyone.
All right, we have executive session, we'll be back. We have returned from executive session, and we are adjourned.